Okay, do we have a motion for the minutes of March 21?
Roll call.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson.
I am here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner White O'Neal.
And Chair Seifert.
Can we have a motion on the planning commission meetings minutes of March 21st?
I will move that we accept the March 21st minutes.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. This time we'll have a public comment period not to exceed a total of 15 minutes. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Seeing nothing, let's move on to the public hearings. May we start with number one? Vandenberg senior residences.
Good evening Chair and members of the commission. My name is Lauren Marselia and I'm an assistant planner with the City of Santa Maria. The applicant for Vandenberg senior residences has requested that this item be continued to a later date. The project will be re-noticed at that time.
Do you have a date for us?
Not at this moment. They would like to review the conditions further, so we still need to meet to discuss that.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone make a motion?
I move that we continue item one to a date to be determined in the future.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're going to see that one later. Item number two, smooth bus wash.
So I'd like to present the smooth bus wash at 240 East Romer Way. This project is located at North Broadway and East Romer. The project site is just west of the current Smooth Inc. office facility. To the north of it is a trucking company, it's Redway. It's in the PDM1, the light industrial zoning district. West of the site is Farm Supply Co. It's in the planned development general commercial zone. And south of the site is a shopping center with Food Max. The site is 1.2 acres. It's in the planned development general commercial zone and it's meant to serve as an expansion of the existing office facility for Smooth. This is the site plan of the project. The bus wash barn is being proposed for the southwest corner of the parcel. There is an existing parking lot that was installed in 2015 as part of an expansion for this office use here. This parking serves as overflow for the staff at Smooth's office. So there are currently 42 parking spaces here with seven bus storage spaces in the rear. This location, or Smooth's operation across both parcels requires 49 parking spaces. That's 45 parking spaces for its office use and four parking spaces for the bus wash barn. The site has 96 parking spaces, or 97 parking spaces, so there's enough parking to accommodate both uses. The applicant doesn't propose any changes to this area here. It's currently covered with landscaping. And there is also landscaping along the frontage of the parcel. And they also would like to propose landscaping in front of the bus wash barn to screen it from East Romer Way. So the buses will, this bus wash barn will serve Smooth's bus wash fleet. There are about 40 bus washes in the fleet. Two employees will staff this location and they'll wash about eight to 10 buses each day. The buses will enter from Romer Way and there's a gate that the buses will have to go through and one wash bay here. So I think there is existing landscaping along the rear of the property where there's a single-family residential district along this portion of the site. So the landscaping will serve as a noise buffer for the wash facilities. This is the landscaping which I, or the landscape plan that I discussed earlier. For the general commercial district, the zoning code requires 15% landscaping. They have about 10,419 square feet of landscaping, which is 20% of the site, which means that they exceed the landscaping requirement. As of right now, this area hasn't been fully landscaped. I do have photos showing the existing site. So this is the landscaping along the frontage and the applicant hasn't proposed any landscaping for this area here. I think that this is an item that the applicant would like to discuss further. They're here for questions after this presentation. That's another view of the existing landscaping looking east towards Farm Supply Co. This is the floor plan for the bus wash bay. Based on the square footage of the site, the zoning code requires one parking space per 310 square feet of floor area. So with the dimensions provided, staff finds that this facility requires four parking spaces, which they've provided with the existing parking lot. Here are some elevations of the site. The maximum proposed height of the building is 22 feet and the maximum height allowed in the general commercial zone is 70 feet, so the building complies with our zoning requirements. The applicant proposes to match the architecture of the existing office facility, so that's what the office looks like adjacent to the east of the site. Here's the color and materials board for the projects. The parapet will be this indigo blue color. The walls, doors, and wall vents will be stucco with this futon color. And the windows will be clear aluminum storefront frames with dark tint blazing. Just to get an understanding of the existing site conditions, this is looking north towards the Redway, the trucking company in the light industrial districts. This is looking east towards Farm Supply Co. And this is looking west towards the existing Smooth facilities. And this is looking south towards the shopping center and the single-family residential Staff recommends that the planning commission by motion approves planned development permit, PD 2017-0023. That concludes staff's presentation of the project. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you Lauren. Do we have any questions for staff?
I do.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes, on page three, it states that PD 2015-0027 required that there be smooth graded and covered with a drought tolerant landscape cover until future development. This permit will require that the applicant comply with that former condition for undeveloped portions of the property. So they didn't comply with that condition previously?
It looks like the site was hydroseated to prevent, as part of our vacant lot standards. That was meant to prevent dust, or wind from carrying dust from the site. Based on the existing conditions.
Right, what I saw.
It appears as though it doesn't meet our landscaping standards. This photo, sorry. This photo was taken this morning and so it looks as though it's, well, the applicant states that this is native grasses, but it appears as though there are some weeds and it doesn't meet our requirements.
We're requiring that this permit bring it up to compliance and we carried that condition forward to make sure that it is carried out with this permit.
So they were out of compliance then? That's my question.
It hasn't been completed yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Tom Martinez, 2624 Air Park Drive, architect for the project. Mr. Talbot, the executive director, was not able to make a signed previous commitment. And we have worked through several of the other items with staff and I appreciate staff's help and assistance in working through those with us. But Mr. Talbot is concerned about the expense that might occur with having to irrigate a formal landscaped area of that size.
How big is the size?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the actual size we're talking about? We can get an idea?
I honestly don't. I want to say it's probably 8,000 to 9,000 square feet of undeveloped area. And they, with the development of the parking lot, which is on the eastern third of the vacant piece, they did grade it and they hydroseated it, but obviously it's not getting water throughout the year. That's one of the problems they had with that. I have some photos that I presented to the commissioners and that shows the site approximately a month ago. So rather than, and it's, the project was obviously approved when they did the 15 expansion. So what we're proposing is rather than formally plant ground cover, is that we irrigate the material that is there. They do mow it about every couple of months and it would be a lot less expensive to just irrigate what is there and keep it looking green versus planting something formal and then having to deal with that. The entire nature of the, I don't know if you can hear me over that.
Barely.
But the basic nature of the project is a cost savings for them to develop the car wash, because as it is, they have to drive those buses on a daily basis. They don't drive all 40 of them, but on a rotating basis, they drive them into town, wash them at a commercial, and then they have to come back. So, you know, fuel, driver's time, pollution, so they're trying to get rid of all of that expense. And then, so they added expense of all of the water to formally, you know, plant that undeveloped area. So we would propose to just irrigate it, because they could put some lines, sprinkler heads around the perimeter and get most of it and keep it in the condition that is in the photo.
You believe that'll come back once it's watered?
I'm sorry?
You believe that it'll come back to this condition once it's watered?
They haven't done anything to that grass area from when they planted, when they developed it in 15, and this is what it looks like during the winter.
Do you know?
Or even a month ago.
Do they have plans on developing the site, or is that something?
Not at this point. But basically that was the only issue that we had with trying to reduce their costs was through that, the irrigation for that project. Aside from that, we'd make ourselves available for any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Dickerson?
So you're basically proposing that you actually install an irrigation system and that it's going to be watered multiple times a week?
Yes.
That sort of thing?
Yes.
Get it up and running? And if it didn't, would you be, would it be objectionable to you that if it didn't then produce that greenery that you were looking for, that at that point, that landscaping that staff is looking for, you'd go back and readdress that?
Upon completion of the project and that irrigation system, we would have no objections to staff looking at the site in six months after the completion to verify that it's maintainable or being maintained.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, is there a blower to dry off the buses in that structure?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
I just had a question for staff. Commissioner Hernandez's point about the requirement in the original PD 2015-0027, I don't see where that is carried over in the current permit. So I'm just, I'm not.
Condition number five.
Number five on the first page. Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, great, thank you. I was looking under the landscaping areas and I wasn't seeing it, but okay, thanks.
Question?
So does the language, and I guess this is for staff, so does the language need to be changed then because what he's proposing is something different than the landscape cover that was originally proposed?
What we can do is we can clarify condition five and add some language at the end. Something along the lines of the plan shall include irrigation to ensure the ground cover is maintained, or something along those lines. The intent is to ensure that it, there's proper ground cover so there isn't bare dirt and dead plants and weeds.
And that then staff would go back in six months and make sure that it meets your approval and?
Yeah, I can add that too.
Okay.
Further questions?
Work for us.
Thank you, Tom. Bring it back to council commission. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that the planning commission approved planned development permit, PD 2017-0023, the smooth bus wash planned development permit at 220 East Romer Way with the additions to item number five of the condition as discussed.
Would you like me to read that for you all and for the record?
Sure, please.
So for condition number five, just adding two sentences to the end, "The plan shall include irrigation to ensure the ground cover is maintained. Staff will inspect the site within six months." Just, period. Staff will inspect the site within six months. That's okay.
Does that then conform, I mean, does that allow you if it's not doing what we're intending it to, to be able to go back and ask for landscaping or ask for, you know?
I think it does. I think it ensures that, the intent is that there's a permanent drought tolerant landscape coverage, there's permanent coverage of the site and that it shall be maintained through irrigation.
Tom, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that was a motion?
It was.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number three, and I do believe we received some, a letter on item number
Thank you Chair, members of the commission. This is an application for a storage facility on a 3.6 acre property in the PDCM zoning The site is on West Benaravia Road, approximately the 1400 block, just east of the A Street intersection. The site is surrounded by other industrial uses. Some of the sites are developed and immediately to the south is a regional basin site. The storage facility that's proposed will consist of four buildings and over 134,000 square feet, including a 1500 square foot caretaker dwelling unit and a 1500 square foot customer office. The planning commission did see this at the February 21st public hearing and at that public hearing, the commission was generally supportive of the architecture. This is one of the elevation sets being displayed now. Another set, and generally supportive of the site layout, the use, and so forth. However, there were questions about the ramp concept to provide access to the second floors of buildings B and C and the limited parking availability at the top of that ramp. And for that reason, the planning commission asked that the applicant return with additional information about the ramp. So the applicant has redesigned the ramp area and this is a blow up of the ramp area here. You can see that the applicant has notched in the building to allow two loading zone areas on either side and a minimum 12-foot wide drive aisle between those loading areas. Again, just to remind the commission for storage facilities, we are dealing in equivalent parking spaces. So parking spaces are shown, but this will just be striped as a loading area. The fire department and the building division have both reviewed these plans for this ramp. The fire department has determined that this ramp is not necessary as a fire lane and therefore it doesn't have to meet the full 24 width. But the fire department did say that with that 12-foot in the, between the loading zones, a fire truck could potentially drive through and could be accommodated, but they don't require it to be a fire lane. Our building division has also looked at this and has no conditions other than what is in the planned development permit about additions or modifications to the building. I will point out that they have accommodated pedestrian doors at the top of the ramp. Here's one, here's another, there's another here and another here. And those pedestrian doors will be required to have bollards around them to protect the open swing of the door from any vehicular traffic and pedestrian, of course, as they exit or enter the building. That same bollard requirement will be applied to all the access doors, no matter where they are on the site. There are access doors on the sides of these buildings and that same protection will be needed there. Those are details that will be worked out at the building plan review stage. That could be accommodated by modifying the building, shortening it. It could be accommodated by providing an inset at those pedestrian doors so they don't swing out into the drive aisle. There's a number of different ways to accommodate that, but that will be accommodated in its building code, so it doesn't necessarily need to be a condition of approval. The applicant understands that and is comfortable with that idea. So here's a perspective drawing of the ramp. You can see the slight angle here. The architect has confirmed that this will be a 10% slope, that they will have enough building space between the two levels to where the building will only be, the second floor of the building will allow a 10% slope on this ramp. There was some question about the percent slope during the first meeting. The other thing that has occurred since the February 21st meeting is the number of units on the second floor has been reduced. This was the February 21st version of the plans and you can see the number of small units along every aisle way practically on both sides of the building. And to show you the current proposal, the number of units has gone down quite a bit on the second floors. There's still a large number of units on the second floor, but it has been reduced. The number has been reduced by 143 units throughout the complex. And so that concludes staff's presentation regarding this proposal. If there are any questions by the commission, staff would welcome them now.
Thank you Frank. Do we have any questions for staff?
I do.
I do want to mention, excuse me, that we did receive a letter, as was noted, a letter in opposition of the project or at least identifying concerns with that project. To note, both the building division manager and also the chief fire inspector have looked at the letter and do not agree with its assertions. Again, building division is comfortable with this plan, as is the fire department.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Couple of things. The first is, so are you saying that the things that Mr. Pick wrote, that each of them is incorrect?
The building department and the fire department are not looking to address his comments directly, but they're saying that those are not issues for this project. So there may be some merit in general for his comments, but they don't apply to this situation or this project.
So could you go back to the, to the slide that showed kind of the frontage? You know, it had the triangle that showed the ramp way and?
Yes. This slide?
Next one.
All right.
That one, there you go. So it is my understanding, first, the ramp itself, and I know that the fire marshal has signed off on it, but the ramp itself, it's the width between the two buildings, if there were two cars, if there was a fire in one of the buildings, is it wide enough at this point that if there were cars, one parked on one lane, one parked another, that a fire truck would be able to get out there and?
And again, even before the question about vehicular parking on this ramp came up before the February meeting, the fire department had already concluded that they did not need this aisle way or this space between the two buildings to be a fire lane, that they could accomplish their tasks by staying on the outside perimeters of these two buildings and that the distance from this outside drive aisle was not exceeding their maximum distance for, I believe it was their equipment and their hoses to reach.
Hauling hoses in and that sort of thing? Okay. So it'd make their job a little bit more difficult, but not impossible?
Perhaps. And they also noted that, I mean, these areas should be, well, unlikely that you'll have people parking on these ramps and that they could pull their truck partly in if need be, but they don't see that as being absolutely necessary and it doesn't, isn't needed to meet their fire code.
Okay. My next concern is, is this lane here along these three red, or three red doors, four red doors. And the question, and my concern is that there is a fire lane basically that runs along that thing. Now, we're obviously not worrying about there being a mandatory fire lane up the ramp, but if you take a look at the plans, there are doors on this end, this end cap, and then there's doors at the other end cap, and then there's a fire lane that basically runs in front of those doors or as part of those doors. And so my question is, how are they going to be dealing with, yeah, that's a good, that's a good one. How are they going to be making sure that nobody parks on those end caps? And I have a real concern with people parking on those end caps. It is absolutely the nature of people to park closest to their spaces and I find it very improbable that everybody is going to park at the far other end and walk their stuff. The... stuff, whatever the distance is to their spaces at the end. So the more likely scenario is that people are going to be parking right next to the door that is closest to, makes it easier to get to their thing, now, to their space. Now, if that's the case, if that is a regular occurrence, which I imagine it would be, then you're talking about a fire lane that's being blocked regularly, and I don't know how they're gonna deal with that.
Well, and it will be marked as a fire lane. It will be marked as no parking. Violations will occur. The applicant has proposed this parking along the southern parts of the building.
Where's that? Okay. Thank you.
There's additional parking here. There's some parking over here. But I do understand what you're saying about the tendency to want to park right adjacent to the door and unload. And I know, yes, those people will be violating the parking code, but yes, I do understand that it might happen. This is an enclosed site. It is a, it's not as if this were a public street or a site open to the general public for the most part. I don't know, particularly in light of the information from the applicant regarding the lengths of stay and parking and so forth, I'm not trying to make a justification why it would be okay for someone to do that. It wouldn't. They shouldn't. It's prohibited, but like you say, they probably will. How we control that, I'm uncertain.
That seems very problematic.
Potentially could ask the applicant to reduce the size of the building, but is that appropriate for a situation where we're accommodating or forcing the applicant to accommodate for what might happen?
Well, I think, I mean, for me, the problem that I have with that particular scenario is we're already, we're already making the fire lanes less than perfect by accommodating the ramp. And then to, in addition, add this additional element, which then makes it even more problematic. I just have a problem, you know, this thing could be a safety, could be a real safety issue down the road. Now, when I first looked at this as being a problem, you know, I was thinking, well, maybe they could just move the building or move the pad because they've got all those parking spaces to the right. The problem that you run into is that the very first row of those parking spaces is a dormant well, so you can't just shift the building, and at least I don't believe so, and cover up that well. That's the reason why those parking spaces are there. So either there has to be some sort of very strict oversight of their clientele, which I'm dubious to think that it would last this test of time, or maybe the building needs to be shortened on the left-hand side to accommodate a parking lane as well as a fire lane. Anyway, that's just my view on the thing.
If I may just suggest, if the Planning Commission so desires, we do have the Chief Fire Inspector here with us today that could possibly respond to those questions.
Can we do that now? Can you go to the podium, please? Thank you. And state your name and address for the record.
Darrell Delgado, Fire Marshal, First City of Santa Maria.
Thank you.
Just to address your question?
Please.
Okay. Generally speaking, we have two options with any of these projects. We can create an ideal fire access situation by giving us 30 feet plus parking, which would basically bring it to about 18, 48 feet wide. Or we can do what the fire code minimum requires that we do and provide that, in this case, anywhere from 24 to 26-foot fire lane based on the height of the building and deal with the enforcement issues afterwards, which we do with almost every other project. There aren't any projects that I know of in the city where we don't have parking issues in fire lanes. And when we see a problem, we conduct some enforcement action till we eliminate the problem. This, as Frank pointed out, has an advantage because it's gated, but we have these problems everywhere in the city, and we don't have any projects that I've seen since I've been here that have that ideal access for us, like the ramp. We work around it. And current storage facilities I've been to do have vehicles parked in the fire lanes, and that's something that we have to work around. There's usually enough room that we can move around the vehicle. If there's not, we gotta move the vehicles or ticket them. So that's nothing new, and it'll happen on every project that we review.
So you're satisfied with the assumption that there's, let's say there's a car parked there, it's a 30-foot lane, and if one or more cars are there, you're still satisfied that you will have enough room to work with that you'll be able to deal with whatever tragedy befalls?
I'm never satisfied, but I'm limited in most respects to the fire code minimums, and they meet the fire code minimums, and we're allowed to be more strict than the fire code, but that requires revision to the municipal code. So right now, we're limited to the revisions we've made to the municipal code if we want to be in strict compliance with the fire code and our municipal code.
Additional questions for the Fire Marshal?
No.
Thank you very much for your comments. Frank? Back to you.
So that staff's presentation is concluded. If there are other questions from the Commission?
Commissioner? For staff?
Yes. Lack of parking on the second floor is another issue. Did staff look at that? And what was your end result?
Correct. The applicant provided a parking analysis. Part of that parking analysis was relying on Institute of Transportation Engineers or I T E studies, and that's something that we typically do for traffic impacts, and we can also use it for parking, as the applicant has done in this case. They've identified that the trip rate to a storage facility, based on the size and number of units of this facility, would equate to the need to have a maximum of 17 parking spaces at any one time for the entire facility. The applicant has provided more than that, of course, throughout the site. It is limited to the six at the top of the ramp. But considering that this facility, again, is gated, the applicant has indicated that other facilities have the same configuration. If there were multiple people, if there were six people at this upper level and the seventh person came, that vehicle would not be blocking city street traffic. It wouldn't be out on the roadway waiting. It would be internal of the site. So in looking at a plan development permit, we're always looking back to the findings, and our findings regarding use permits and plan development permits look at the impacts that the project might cause to neighboring properties. And even though this parking may be short and there may be people waiting to get to the second floor and unload, those people are going to be contained entirely within the site, and that issue would be an issue for their business model, but it won't be an issue for the neighboring properties. And therefore, from a planning standpoint, we can still support the plan development permit, even though we may think we wouldn't do it this way, but the applicant seems confident that their business plan and their configuration will serve their clients, their customers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, just to clarify, the circulation on the site, the ramp is the only one-way element in this parking line, right?
And actually, the ramp itself is wide enough to be considered two-way. Once you get to the parking area, it would be a one-way situation. But yes, that is the only pinch point where we might have one-way traffic.
So on the left there says one-way. That drive aisle is two-way?
That is wide enough for two ways. In terms of a fire lane, it's a one-way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Any more questions? Can we hear from the applicant? Just a brief ex parte, I did have a brief discussion on this project with one of the applicants.
Thank you. I was about to redo the same thing. I met Mr. Cahill as well.
Met with Mr. Bill Cahill.
As did I.
And I also met with Sir Cahill.
Boy, they had a lot of meetings. Yeah.
Glad we said something. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Chairman Seifert. My name's Joseph Cahill. I'm with Central Coast Land Investments. First, I would like to thank you all for your time, all but Mr. Hernandez. I was able to meet in person and hopefully answer some of the questions you had from the first meeting. I want to double back and address a couple of the concerns I just heard. First, when talking about the fire lane on the left and how people would park there, and I agree with you, it is human nature, and you're going to park near the door. I have a long, really, my only thing I've done in my career is development and property management. And so we've managed all kinds of different facilities, and this is very similar to a multifamily facility where you have fire lanes inside the property, the property's gated, residents still want to park near their unit, and so they'll park in that fire lane, and it's just a matter of managing that onsite. We do have someone onsite 24 hours a day. The property obviously is not open 24 hours a day, but, you know, the managers in the unit there will have cameras. There's 40-something cameras around the site. They'll have the ability to see if someone's parking in the fire lane and can address that very simply. You know, just walk out there, hey, it's a fire lane. Would you mind moving your car? And I don't think that would be something that would cause problems. I think people would understand and, you know, happily oblige for doing that. The other thing I'd like to talk about, and Frank, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the slides, I have some pictures of actual properties that have been developed with the same ramp style. I've shown some pictures, but this will be easier for everyone to look.
Bear with us here, we're having a slate.
Yes.
Let me try. Is the PDF the same?
Okay, this is an actual site. This is an actual site that has two ramps. I just wanted to show you that, you know, there are sites out there that use the same design that are highly effective, and many of the new developers are going to this style property. I was out at the Self-Storage Convention in Las Vegas, and this design was what most of the people were implementing as I talked to different developers. If we could go to one of their photos that actually show the ramp.
Sure. There we go.
Keep going. There you go. Okay, so all of the ramps in these pictures are 28 feet wide. That's kind of the industry standard. Ours actually, after comments from the first meeting, ours, we actually expanded to 30 feet at the top of the ramp to accommodate more parking and then more space to get between them. But what I wanted to point out, we haven't included any of the spaces along that ramp in our parking analysis, but you can park anywhere up along the ramp. We don't call those out because it would be less convenient if you're moving stuff out of your car to be on a ramp, but those are also spaces. So someone at the end of the building B or C could park right there at the bottom of that ramp and access their unit there. So there is more parking than just the spaces that are defined. You know, I estimate that there's probably an additional 20 to 25 spaces on that ramp if you actually needed them, with still enough room to get a vehicle or even a fire truck between them. So just wanted to point that out. The spaces look limited, but when you're moving cars around, they don't all go to the same spot. There's going to be enough room, and if not, it's something that the management just addresses. Like, if the people that are renting the spaces don't like the setup, they aren't going to rent there, then that's bad on us. We feel very comfortable that the design that we've presented won't have problems with parking. It'll be a beautiful structure in Santa Maria, something that we haven't seen here, and I think it's something the public would really enjoy.
Any questions? Commissioner Dickerson?
Just a quick question, Mr. Cahill. So it's my understanding, then, that if somebody is going to park in these fire lanes, that you will pretty quickly send somebody out to ask them to move. Maybe they'll be there just to unload or to load something up quick, but you're not looking at somebody who's going to be reorganizing their storage units if you're going to ask them to move to one of the other parking spaces?
Correct. And the way that the property is staffed, there'll be at least three people onsite. There's always a manager, some office person, and then we also have a maintenance guy that just basically cleans the property, and he's in his cart, and he's outside the whole time driving around. So someone pulls up, parks in that fire lane, that maintenance guy's going to be there within minutes. So even before they start unloading all their stuff and getting halfway through the process, we'll have someone over there that can ask them to move around the corner.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioners? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for your time.
Going to bring this back to the Commission. Any discussion? And would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Plan Development Permit PD 2017-0016, the Central Coast Land Investment Self-Storage Project at 1400 Block of West Bedaravia Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
By the way, this probably should have been discussed. This is a good-looking project, and I really appreciate the architecture that went into it. As far as a mini storage place goes, it's the nicest that I've seen, so congratulations and good luck with it, guys.
Sounds like you have a future customer.
No, no, no. No, no. Phil, I said no.
Pretty sure that was on the record. At this time, I'm going to take a quick break. I think we're going to be here for a little minute.
Yes.
The next component is up in the northwest corner of the specific plan area in Area 6 and 7. This is 14.4 acres and encompasses the high-density residential project that was approved in 2017 called Easton Apartments. It's a 318-unit apartment project that was approved by the Planning Commission. Below that is a lot that's designated for a future school use, an elementary school, within Area 5, and this is a 10.7-acre parcel and proposed to be an elementary school. And just below that is a park within Area 5, and that's 6.2 acres and will be where the relocated Eno's house will be refurbished and set in place within a park setting. It's also the location of the regional retention basin for the whole project site area that will also be dual-use for recreational purposes. And then last but not least, the project that we will be discussing tonight is the last portion of the Eno's Rancho specific plan area, which is Areas 4 and 7, that encompasses the auto dealerships. This is a 26.6-acre portion of the specific plan area, and it's within a new car sales auto overlay. We've divided this area into two campuses, a north campus and a south campus that's divided by Meehan Street that runs in the middle of it. It was divided into two campuses for the ease of designing the infrastructure and stormwater control requirements for the project access, fire access, and things of that nature to really help those campuses function more cohesively and for ease of review for the Planning Commission. So we'll begin looking lot by lot through these campuses, and we'll start from the north and make our way to the south. And so we'll begin on north campus with the first two lots, Lots 2 and 3, which are the sites of Home Motors. Home Motors is comprised of Cadillac and Chevrolet. This site will have two buildings on it housing both of those dealerships. The Chevrolet site is the site that, or Chevrolet building is the building that faces Bradley Road. This building is 51,500 square feet and will be two stories in height. And behind that building facing Battles Road will be Cadillac, which is 33,500 square feet and will be a one-story building, which is a smaller-scale building in proportion to the adjacent residential use that will be next to it. The taller, more visible building will be two stories that will face Bradley Road and Highway 101. The entire site, which is both Lots 2 and 3, will have 266 parking spaces provided onsite. Now, that's in addition to the inventory parking that will be used for vehicle display or storage for their cars that are being sold. That's parking spaces that will be utilized for service vehicles or customer parking or employee parking. On-site, they have 9% landscaping that they've provided. The code and specific plan require 15%. They are asking for a landscape reduction for this project as they are only providing 9%. Within this project in particular, there is one unique feature that they do have a car wash onsite. This car wash is located where the laser pointer is, and that car wash facilitates the service needs of the dealerships themselves. It won't be open for the general public use, but more for the dealerships for the service of their cars and the cars that they are working on. Here is a floor plan of both the Cadillac and the Chevrolet buildings. On the left is the Cadillac floor plan, which is just one story. And again, up front will be their showroom, office, and administrative portion of it, and in the rear will be their service bays for their service operations. The Chevrolet building located on the right, on the bottom is the first floor plan. Again, majority of their office use and service use and where the public will be coming into their showroom is in the front of the building, and then their service bays and operations are in the rear of the building. And then the second floor accommodates more future office use areas and expansion of the ability for roof deck parking or inventory parking should the project need it in the future. Here are elevations of Cadillac and Chevrolet. The top elevation is Cadillac that faces Battles Road. All of the buildings have very similar modern architecture, use of metals and plaster with tower features at the entrances and large areas for signage, large storefront windows that open up into their showroom areas, as they will also have, many of them will have vehicles displayed in their showroom areas, so those would be visible, and customer lounge and seating areas. So they have large storefront windows. Here is the elevation of Chevrolet facing Battles Road as well as Bradley Road that will be also facing Highway 101. Here's a rendering of what Home Motors looks like from Bradley Road. This is the Chevrolet building again with the elevation.
Just to depict the actual trees now, this is the newest?
As they propose it, yes.
Thank you.
Moving down to the next lot, so we did Lots 2 and 3 for Home Motors. Just below that is Lot 4, which will house the relocation of Toyota. Lot 4 will encompass a 70,000-square-foot building. The Toyota building will be two stories in height. Some of the unique features of Toyota is that there is a fueling facility right about where the laser pointer is, and that fueling facility is for the fueling purposes of their dealerships as well, and not open to the general public for fueling needs, but just for the service of their dealership. The site, the building walls have 37 service bays, contains customer cafe and lounge in their building, and provides 237 parking spaces throughout the site. And again, that's for service, employee, and customer parking, in addition to the inventory parking they'll be housing onsite. Again, Toyota is requesting a landscape reduction. They are only providing 11% landscaping, whereas the 15% is required by code and specific plan. Here is the first floor and second floor elevations of Toyota. Large, the green area is the large customer areas and seating areas. There will be a cafe and lounge for customers that are waiting, as well as some vehicle display along the showroom windows. Their office uses, and in the rear, this blue area is all their service bays, 37 service bays that they have at Toyota. The second floor will be more administrative offices, training rooms, conference rooms. They have employee lounge, gym, and break rooms available. And then this rear portion of the building is all a parking deck for inventory parking and storage. And here's the elevations of Toyota, similar to their corporate architecture. Again, tower features at the entrances, large glass windows and storefronts, a lot of metal, clean lines, and design of their building. The center elevation is what will be facing Bradley Road and Highway 101. Here's a rendering of the Toyota. This is a view from Highway 101 as you're driving by of the building, and then their outdoor display areas and parking areas. And here is a secondary view as you're driving up to Toyota on Highway 101. Again, this, to address your question again, Tim Seifert, this, Commissioner Seifert, this is the design of the tree layout that they are currently proposing.
Thank you.
Moving down to the next site just below Toyota is Lot 5 and 6, and this is called Lot 5 Auto because currently there is no auto dealership proposed for this. There's no tenant yet in mind for this site. However, they have moved forward with the design of the site layout and some renderings. In the future, should a auto dealership locate here, there might be minor modifications to the site design or architecture based on the needs of that dealership at that time. This site is proposing a 29,000-square-foot building, also two stories in height. It's a smaller site with only 97 parking spaces provided for customer, employee, and service parking. They have fewer service bays, only 10 at this location. It's a smaller dealership on smaller lots. They are also requesting a landscape reduction for this site, only providing 13% landscaping with the 15% required. Here is their-
Excuse me, Nada. At one point, I remember that there was a discussion of 8% when we were doing the specific plan, I believe. We had talked about reducing it at one time. I know that they, that we've looked at this, but didn't, am I remembering that correctly?
I'm not in recollection of the exact number. What did end up being drafted in the specific plan was a 15% requirement. The auto dealerships were, however, allowed to count the parkways towards their landscaping, whereas the other projects in the specific plan area were not. So the other retail uses, residential, had to provide 15% on their site minus the parkways. The auto dealerships were allowed to count their parkways towards their landscape. Also, through the PD permit process, with this project and any project, the Planning Commission has the ability to reduce the landscape requirement through the PD permit process, and that's what they're requesting here. So the floor plan and elevations of Lot 5. One story, the first story of Lot 5, again, open to the general public, public spaces in the front of the building and their service bays in the rear. This is the elevations facing Bradley Road and Highway 101, and this is the elevation facing Meehan Street, since this is a corner lot car dealership. Here is a rendering of what that dealership could look like, and this view is shot from Meehan Street looking at the auto dealership. Jumping down now to the south campus, so we're on the south side of Meehan Street. We've passed Lot 8, which will be the future splash and dash, and moved on to Lot 10, which is the future home for Honda. Honda will be relocating to Lot 10. This building will be 59,000 square feet. It'll be a three-story building. This is the only auto dealership proposed at three stories. Even though it's at three stories, it does not exceed the maximum height allowed within the specific plan or this area. The tallest portion of this building is 36 feet in height, and the specific plan allows for even taller than that, leave at 40 feet. It will house 23 service bays. Also, will have customer cafe and lounge areas. It'll have a roof deck on top for inventory parking, and the site provides 128 parking spaces for employee, service, and customer needs. The site is also asking for a landscape reduction as it's only providing 12% landscaping onsite.
Nada, just a clarification. The proposed splash and dash, that's not Lot 7, it's Lot 8?
The proposed splash and dash would be Lot 8. Behind it is a Lot 9, which will be a future retail building that's not designed yet.
Okay. Where's Lot 7? Which one is that?
Lot 7 is, if you see where my laser-
Oh, it's on the north side?
It's right, yeah, right at the corner of Shepherd and Meehan, also not designed at this time. Here are the floor plans for Honda. Three-story building, first floor, lots of customer space with cafe, dining, seating areas, and public offices for the operation. And then in the rear is their service bay area. Second floor is all administrative offices as well as employee amenities. And then the third floor is all a parking deck for inventory parking. Here are the elevations for Honda. The Bradley Street frontage elevation that will also be facing Highway 101, and then the Shepherd Drive elevation on the lower elevation. They are proposing, these panels that are shown on this elevation are proposed to have periodic artwork placed in them, and there is a condition in the permits for Lot 10 and Lot 11, which we'll be looking at, that allows for artwork or murals or things of that nature to be placed in these panel areas. The applicants have a desire to maybe have a competition, have the school districts submit artwork and have those displayed in this area or things of that nature to add a unique feel to the Shepherd Drive since it's facing a school and a residential area and a park. Here's a rendering of Honda as a view if you're driving down Bradley Road. And here is an elevation of what I was just discussing on Shepherd Drive, viewing those panel areas in the rear that have artwork displayed in them. And last but not least, the southern tip of Area 4, which is Lot 11. This is Lot 11 Auto. There is no auto dealer proposed yet for this site either. However, the applicant is moving forward with a design. Again, should a dealership occupy this site, there might be minor modifications to the site plan or architecture that will need to be done to address their needs or corporate designs. This is a 28,500-square-foot building. This is also two stories in height, 18 service bays, and provides 103 parking spaces for service, employee, and customer needs. This site is not asking for a landscape reduction and exceeds the 15% required. Here are the two-story floor plans for the site. Similarly, with customer and employee amenities and offices in the front and service bays in the rear. Second floor has more office uses and potentially future parking, inventory, storage needs should this auto dealership need it. And here are the elevations of this dealership. Similarly to Honda, they do provide the panels along the Shepherd Drive elevation for future artwork. This is the elevation facing Bradley Street, and then also the elevation that will be facing the park, which is just south of this project site. We've gone through and shown all the different elevations and projects for the auto dealerships. There was a letter that was received from Urban Planning Concepts. A copy of that letter is at your podiums right now that was also emailed to you last week. And this letter was from Urban Planning Concepts on behalf of the applicant with the desire to discuss a few of the conditions that were included in some of these plan development permits, and we wanted to go through each of those items that the applicant wanted to discuss or modify. And those top requests were the employee parking, tree planting, fees, temporary access roads, and the CCNRs. So we'll go through that, each request. The first one was for the employee parking. There's currently a condition in each of the plan development permits that addresses employee parking. The top condition is how it is read in your packet that was provided to you, and below is the modifications that the applicant is requesting. The request is to strike out the first sentence and replace it with the language that is underlined. Staff's recommendation is to leave the condition as proposed in the packet and not to modify this condition. Shepherd Drive is the only street in the specific plan area that does allow for on-street parking. All of the other streets are restricted and have no parking signs on them. It is also the only street that's surrounded by so many different uses. We have the residential, the park, the school, and the auto dealerships that all back or front onto Shepherd Drive, and so this street will be heavily used by all user types. To ensure that access is provided for all user types, this condition is to just ensure that all of the auto dealerships keep all their operational needs on their site instead of using the on-street parking as supplement to their operational needs.
Nada, doesn't Shepherd Drive have a limited parking time?
Yes, it currently has a two-hour restriction.
And are we planning on changing that?
I do not believe that there is any intention right now from Public Works to change that. Changing that two-hour restriction would require a request to the Traffic Committee. The Traffic Committee would have to make a recommendation to the City Council for that change to happen, and City Council would have to remove or revise that two-hour restriction.
So it sounds like that's always going to be a two-hour restricted parking?
Unless otherwise modified by City Council.
Thank you.
Wouldn't that take care of the concern, the two-hour?
The Shepherd Drive is one of the concerns, but also surrounding properties is also another concern. For example, overflow parking into the Costco parking lot or other retail areas in conjunction with, you know, the other different users of this area that, this condition is really just to ensure that the operational needs, there's other conditions in the permit to, in regards to, auto inventory can't be stored on other properties or in the street, or service parking can't happen there. It's just to ensure that the operational parking needs of the dealerships happen on their site. Customers are welcome to park on the street, but this is just to really ensure that the dealerships are managing their parking.
Have we allowed them not to have enough parking on the site or for their employees?
They do meet their employee parking requirements. Should in the future employee parking needs change, this condition just ensures, should there be an influx or a seasonal need more than others, and there seems to be a deficiency onsite for their parking, that it allows us to review that and come up with an alternate plan of addressing that need.
How would we enforce that?
How would we enforce that? Most often, parking issues are on a complaint basis. If there are lots of complaints or issues arising from parking on other properties, say Costco calls and complains, or Shepherd Drive is becoming unmanageable in parking, then we would take a look at what the parking problems were, where they were coming from, and try and alleviate some of those through this condition and working with the surrounding properties.
Wouldn't you do that with or without this condition?
It could be possible, but this condition then allows us, it in writing, to be able to do so. Any other questions?
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So does that only apply to the dealerships, or does that also apply to Lots 7 and 9, which I also had a meeting with Urban Planning Concepts and the representatives of the car dealerships this past week? So my question would be, Lot 7 and Lot 9, I believe, weren't going to be car dealerships? So would those also be required to park onsite?
So there are no plan development permits in at this time for Lots 7 or 9. So when those plan development permits come in, we would take a look and see if also this condition is warranted for those projects. A similar type of condition was placed in Easton Apartments project. They had a condition that required them to manage their residence parking and their vehicle counts, and if there was a parking problem that arose, they had to come up with a management plan. And if the problem persisted, they had a secondary contingency plan to convert some of their landscape areas into additional parking lots onsite. So this has been a concern through the various plan development permits that faced Shepherd Drive.
Please continue.
The next condition for discussion is the tree planting condition. The current condition in the plan development permits is a requirement to add additional, to add additional palms along the plaza frontage area and to add palms along the Bradley Road frontage at a spacing of one per 40 feet. The applicant would like to remove with the addition of palms at a spacing of one per, every 40 feet along Bradley Road. They are agreeable to adding the additional palms along the plaza areas and frontages of the buildings. However, they would like to cluster the palms along the Bradley Road frontage. Both options comply with the specific plan, so just to show you both of these options. Option A is what's proposed in your packets and by the applicants, which is the clustering of the trees at the entrances. As you can see here, this is just a snippet from the north campus, so Battles Road, this is Bradley Road, and Meehan is over here, and this is the Home Motors, Toyota, and Lot 5 Auto dealerships. As you can see from their proposal, they are proposing just to cluster the palms at the entrances of each of the dealerships, as my laser pointer indicates, and then leave these, the large spanses that front the freeway, visible and free of any palm trees or canopy trees.
Does this plan show the trees that have been added next to the building? I don't see them.
No, it does not.
So this isn't an accurate plan?
This isn't reflecting of this condition. The condition requires that in addition to this plan, they add those trees.
Thank you.
This is just a schematic rendering that staff came up with, and we spaced these palms based off of the parking stalls being at a roughly 10-foot spacing, and this is roughly what palm spaced at 40 feet on center along that frontage would look like. And so this is what we're calling Option B, the 40 feet on center. If the Planning Commission would like to choose Option B, they would just leave the condition as is in the packet. If they would like Option A, then a revision would need to be made to the, to the conditions removing or striking out that sentence. Moving on to the next condition for discussion.
Nada, just real quick. So basically, you're taking the additional palms and you're putting them along the frontage rather than putting them next to the buildings? Is that?
This, so there's two parts to the condition. The first part to the condition is the requirement of additional palms along the building. The applicant is agreeable to that and is agreeable to adding additional palms. The second part of the condition is adding palms along the Bradley Road frontage. The condition reads that they be added at a 40-foot spacing. The applicant would not, would like to not do that portion of the condition. Instead, they would like to cluster them at the entrances and leave the Bradley Road frontage visible and void of palm trees.
So either way, we're, either way, we're talking about additional palms next to the buildings, and really, we're just talking about whether or not it's on the frontage?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it's the same amount of trees? They're just clustering them?
Yes.
Did I hear the number, 189 additional trees to what's required?
I'm not sure about the number count. The 40-foot, I'm not sure what the length of that frontage is, but that would just be divided by, you know, within the landscape area, it's just 40 feet on center in that. In this rendering, that's roughly 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
I remember when we did the specific plan-
18 trees.
-there was quite a bit of discussion about visibility from the freeway. That's why the spot was taken and that the auto dealerships were very, very cognizant of the fact that if we put trees up, they're not going to move in because of the different brands. I believe that was the discussion that we had. So by forcing them to put the trees in here, we would actually be doing exactly what they said would not attract auto dealers, if I remember the correction, if I remember that conversation correctly. It was quite a while ago.
Yes.
That was their argument.
Yes.
Moving on to the next condition for discussion in regards to fees. This condition is a lot longer than as shown here, but to save us six slides, just put the first sentence. The applicant would like to add an additional sentence to the end of that condition that indicates that fees may also be reviewed by the City Council. Staff recommends leaving the condition as proposed- leaving the condition as proposed in your packet. There is a whole chapter of the municipal code that discusses impact fees and growth mitigation fees, and a process that needs to be followed to ask for waivers or reductions in fees. The first step is to submit a request to the City Clerk's office prior to Planning Commission action. The applicant has, has done that, has submitted a request to the City Clerk's office to discuss fee waivers or reductions, but the, but staff felt it was unnecessary to add this additional line since the municipal code is very clear in outlining the process of what needs to occur.
Do you have an idea about the fees? How much money are we talking?
I, I am not sure.
You don't know?
No. The next condition for discussion is temporary access roads. The condition as read in your packet discusses the need for curbs and gutters on these temporary access roads. The applicant would like to strike out the portion that discusses curbs and gutters. Staff's recommendation is to leave the condition as proposed in the packet. The fire department and the fire marshal indicated that curbs and gutters are a necessary component to their temporary access roads, that it really maintains them in place and doesn't dissipate the base gravel throughout the site, and provides a much more stable area for these temporary access roads, since these are construction sites and there is a lot of movement onsite. So staff is recommending leaving the condition as is. The final condition for discussion is in reference to the CCNRs. This condition only occurs in the north campus and south campus PD permits. The applicant wanted modification to the CCNR. However, staff is just recommending removing this condition in its entirety since there are other conditions in the PD permit that cover the requirements that the CCNRs would cover in maintenance agreements.
Why are only the first two packets required to have CCNRs?
The first two PD permits cover the north campus in its entirety, and it's the south campus in its entirety. So through those PD permits, every lot is covered, even the lots that aren't under review right now.
Thank you.
Okay. With that concludes staff's presentation. On this line, I have outlined the recommendations. There will need to be separate actions made for each one of these plan development permits. In your agenda is outlined, they're numbered 4A through 4G. The Planning Commission is able to act on them individually or as a set. However, with the discussion of the staff recommended modifications to the conditions, north campus and south campus with condition seven removed, which discusses the CCNRs, and then in addition to that Lot 11 auto, a revision to condition seven in regards to the wrought iron fencing, we had, that was a staff error of not modifying those words to decorative tubular steel fencing, which the applicant and staff is agreeable to the modification of that language. If there are any other revisions to the conditions that the Planning Commission would like to make, that is in your purview. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's here, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Neta. Commissioners, any questions?
I have one question, just a point of order, but we do have to make a decision about the tree planting.
Yes, you do. Either to leave as is or to modify, or any of the other conditions we discussed. That would be...
And then as is, is the trees planted every 40 feet in addition to the additional trees closer to the building, plus the clusters?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what's currently being recommended in the condition. Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aneta, does the Cadillac dealership that's on the northwest corner, is that required to have dark sky lighting?
Required to have dark sky lighting.
Yeah, those requirements for dark sky?
Are the mitigation measures for the specific plan, well, the EIR that was part of the specific plan and our municipal code requirements have maximum foot candles that any of the auto dealerships can have. That limits their lighting projection. They're not allowed to project off-site, and they're not to, allowed to project upwards. Everything has to be downlit and meet that requirement. There are photometric plans in both the north campus and the south campus PD permits that meet those requirements.
Okay. And then my second couple of questions really pertain to the circulation of the area. Is there a median on Meehan, at the corner of Meehan and Bradley?
No, I don't think so. I'm looking to Public Works, because they pay attention to medians.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lopez, there is not a median on Meehan. And forgive me, what was the other street?
No, the, it was just where the intersection is, right on the opposite side of Costco. So I know...
No, there's not.
The car wash isn't in front of us today, but I was just looking at the circulation there. Is that going to come before, is that a later date?
Once they, the applicant resubmits their PD permits in a future date, yes. I don't believe there's a median there. I was just out there today. I didn't run into one.
And then the last question, the left-hand turnpockets, do they align with the driveways that are posed?
Yes, the driveways that are existing out there, the driveways aprons have already been poured and installed, and so those left-hand turnpockets and those medians align with those driveways, and none of these PD permits are proposing to alter those driveway locations.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
Yes. As to the trees, in page two, it says canopy trees B, the street frontages of the portion of Area Four that have direct views from the US Highway 101 are not required to have any street trees or any landscape median that would otherwise block freeway views. So when we put them in clusters, they're complying with that, because they don't have to have any? Is that what it...
Are you reading language from the specific plan?
Yes, that's what it says, specific plan. Page two.
Okay. From the staff report?
Yes.
Just orienting myself to where you are. Yes, so the specific plan specifically for Area Four did not require the planting of canopy trees in the parkways. So the rest of the specific plan area was required to have canopy trees in the parkways. So there's the 10-foot landscape area in front of the sidewalk, then there's a sidewalk, and then there's a 10-foot landscape area behind the sidewalk. So there was a 26-foot right-of-way or setback in, in the specific plan area. For all other projects in the specific plan, that first 10 feet that we call the parkways have canopy trees installed, and you can see them along Bradley and Meehan and Shepherd. The, that requirement was removed for the Bradley Road frontage facing Highway 101, so canopy trees were not required to be installed in that parkway area.
And then there was an allowance for palms, right, because of the nature of the auto dealerships?
That's correct. So the specific plan also allowed the Planning Commission to allow for palms instead of canopy trees to be installed on the auto dealership sites. The rest of the specific plan area, again, was required to install canopy trees. It was a mitigation measure in the EIR, and also a requirement in the specific plan.
Seeing no other questions, can we have the applicant?
My name is Pat Cusack, 2175 South Bradley Road, representing the auto dealers. I would first like to take a second, if I could, and introduce the team that's come with us tonight for the meeting. Mike McNulty here is a partner at Home Motors Chevrolet, also Toyota and Honda, and then has two Chevrolet stores, one in Roy Grandy, one in Paso. Chuck Ebert, my father-in-law, who 52 years ago was here getting approval for a Chevrolet on Main Street, and now we're moving it over, so he's, he's joining with us, and is partners with Mike. My wife Dana, Chuck's, Chuck's daughter. I got a really good deal when I married Dana and got to be with Chuck. Behind him is Gavin, who works at our Toyota store. My daughter Stephanie. I know Tim Ritchie was here, and, and I think there was one other guy that had poked up there. Oh, my son Patrick was here, but had to go back to sell a car. He came up and said, so just to give you an idea, we have a whole group that's, that's here. Also, on our team, it's been very helpful, has been Jake Weintraub, who's over here, and then also Lori. As you know Lori, everybody gets Lori on their team if they're smart, so Lori's been a big help to us. So we, we appreciate the opportunity. Before I show you a quick little video, because I wanted to just kind of cap where we have been in the past and how we're trying to carry on the, the auto tradition, I wanted to take a second and give a heartfelt thanks to Chun, Ryan, and Neta, who have really done an excellent job of working with us and working through the issues that we had, helping us to transition from what we have now to grow the auto, the auto dealerships, and get us in a position to be successful. Since Chun came on board, it has been a breath of fresh air with he and Ryan and Neta to be able to sit down and talk through issues and be realistic about what we're trying to each accomplish. So I have no doubt that they're looking out for the city's interests as well as our own, and we feel it and appreciate it, and just wanted to say thank you, because it really has been, has been great for us, and we appreciate it. That being said, I wanted to take a second, if I could, and maybe queue up the little video that I put together, because in doing some research on this project, I couldn't help but look at what had been done in the past, and we appreciate being entrusted by the city to carry on part of the auto, part of the auto elements and, and part of the auto responsibility. And my father-in-law really was the one who started this a long ago with his father-in-law, Hal McBride, and so we put together a little clip that gives you a little taste of where we've been in the past, where we are now, and where we hope to go in the future. It's like 90 seconds, it's not too long, but if you could bear with me and if we could pull that up, it's, it's got some interesting elements, and a lot of people, Bob Grogan is in the video. My father-in-law hasn't seen it yet, so I may get some grief after the meeting on this. See Mayor Hobbs is in there, or I think a councilman at that time. There's Chuck and Carolyn and McBride. There's Bob Grogan on the left, Mike's father. That's the hospital, Marion Hospital, being built. They had Little Joe come for the grand opening. We're thinking of bringing him back this time. And that's some of our team, 350-plus employees, multiple families, you know, we're pretty active in the community, and this is, everybody is super, super excited at our, at our dealerships. And that's my son Patrick, and then one, one of the Sai's. That's all of us back in the day, I think 16 kids in that picture. That's what we're looking to come to now. And special thanks to the city, and then a shout-out to my father-in-law, who really gave us that opportunity to do all this stuff today, and he's lost a little hair, but he's still a mentor to all of us, so. I hope I got the numbers right, Chuck, but it's, thank you. That's some all of us, Mike, all, all the guys, bouquet, everybody, so. And then I had Jake at the end, so if there's any problems, call Jake. That's what we're, we promise that. So I'll, I'll wrap it up by simply saying we appreciate the opportunity. Lori's going to go over more of the details. We've worked hard. We appreciate everybody meeting with us, listening to us, and giving us advice along the way. We're really excited about carrying the torch for auto for the next 50 years. We have, you know, Gavin, son-in-law, Patrick, Fabian, David Leroy, a bunch of other guys at our stores. We have a lot of employees who are excited about this next move. We've outgrown the area where we're at, and we're excited about carrying the torch, like I mentioned. We picked that location because of, obviously, the proximity of the freeway. We're going to be able to backfill, attract other dealerships to our existing stores, but we're taking our big horses and moving them down there, and give ourselves a chance to kind of spread our wings and hopefully really generate a lot of revenue. We know our job is to do that, and we're hoping to basically get it, come from other areas, come to our location, and that's our plan. So we appreciate your support, and I'll turn it over to Lori. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, can I just make a comment? That'd be a hell of a deal if you could get, if you get Little Joe.
Yeah, yeah. We could probably get a better deal than what they paid back then. And then I heard you'd mentioned that you can't give a deal, because Joe Gayle mentioned something, so I, I don't know what that means. When you guys come to buy a car, we have to charge a full sticker price, but I think we could do better than that.
Once again, no, Philip, no.
Good evening, Lori Tamora, Urban Planning Concepts. Proud to be part of this team, moving this project forward. Again, been involved with the Enos Ranch specific plan for over four and a half years. We are here today almost on the second anniversary of the approval of the specific plan, and you can see what can get accomplished in, you know, two years out there. Neta did a very good job making the presentation and reviewing the project. I would like to slide down to, I think it's slide 47. I, I had like 75 slides, but I don't think we need to go through them, because Neta used most of them. It's the black one with the video. We have worked hard over the last month and a half since the Planning Commission study session to see the adding trees, looking at visual perspectives, trying to see how things would look from the freeway and from Bradley Road. So if you could take a minute and just watch this video as you're going along Highway 101, as we envision it now, adding trees and clustering elements. Again, you're going 65 miles an hour, so you don't blink. Oops, is that coming up? Oh, that's the Chevy dealership. Clustered trees, there's Toyota, there's, and then you go right into the Costco area. This is heading south, and there's Costco building. Now we're going to turn around, head north. Again, you know, these are the trees that were approved on the Costco property, and then you can see the view of the Toyota dealership with the added trees along the frontage clustering, and then the Chevy dealership. This is what we are proposing, and we respect the, the suggestions that have been provided by adding more trees around the building and clustering them up front. We think that addresses both the city's concern, the city staff's concerns, as well as the desire for those major hallmark buildings to be seen by the freeway traffic. Steph, again, Steph made a very good presentation. Neta, I would like to go back to the illustration or the elevations for the Home Motors dealership. Yeah, please. There was a little bit of a misnomer in regards to what's happening on the Home Motors elevation. There's the Home Motors. The Cadillac portion that you saw in the illustrations is right around the corner, so it's going to be Chevy and then Cadillac in this front complex. The back complex is being reserved for more of a higher-end, I'm not going to say higher-end, heavier car repair area, you know, it's, it's that area between service and collision. So there's an area where, you know, you need additional work, and that's what the back building looks like. So it, it was made to be a corner building, but it's not for auto sales as of yet. It's more of a service area. So just want to make sure you understand, when the question came up from Commissioner Lopez about night lighting, the Cadillac, Home Motors, and the Chevy area is all working at the front of the complex, not in the back. So just want to clarify that. There was one other comment that was made in regards to the height of the buildings on Toyota and Lot 11 property. These are, they initially were proposed... These are, they initially were proposed as three-story buildings. We got into a little bit of an issue with the fire department, that they require on three-story buildings that the drive aisles within the parking lot be 30 feet wide, just the drive aisles. But if we get below 36 feet and you're a two-story building, you don't need that wide drive aisle. And so, we made the decision to reduce the height of the buildings. And so, the Toyota building is at 35 feet, and the Lot 11's at 30. Now granted, it does have a car parking in the, above the second-story roof, but it's the height of the building itself is below the standard that would require wider drive aisles. So, we wanted to make sure that Darryl wasn't thinking about higher conditions for us while Neta was making the presentation. We have provided quite a few trees on the overall campus. Initially, the requirement was 155 trees on the campus, not on the street trees, and we have 246. So, we have been strategic in the location of the additional trees since the Planning Commission Study Session. We believe we've met the intent of providing the trees that would help with screening, and yet still provide the ability for the project to be viewed very strategically from great vantage points. We still, if you could go back to the condition on Shepherd, please? I think after reviewing the conditions and the comments that staff brought up, we're pleased that the CCNR provision is being deleted, because CCNRs are usually tied to residential projects. Maintenance agreements are tied to commercial projects, and we just wanted to get that wordsmithing right. So, we're pleased with that. Secondly, we prefer the tree condition that talks about clustering rather than the other one. We hope you will support that. Third, we believe that there is a little bit of a misunderstanding about the provision that we're asking for on employee parking. We will be providing the required onsite parking for employees and customers, and, you know, obviously, that's required by the review of the permit, and you saw the numbers and the conditions that are outlined for each one of the projects. We will be notifying all of the employees that there are onsite parking. We will notify them that they are responsible to meet the requirements of what is required ground the property. No parking on Bradley, no parking on Shepherd, or on College, or on Blosser. So, the question is going to be, how far do we, as the owners, police our employees? So, we believe that leaving it to the notification that the employees need to follow the street laws, as city posts onsite, we should be fine. And that's why we prefer the condition number five as written, and hope that you will also support us. All these dealerships, all these dealers have more things to do than to go out and police what's happening on Shepherd. And if the city has a two-hour parking requirement, then whoever parks there needs to meet that requirement. And so, we hope that you will support this condition, this wording for that condition. The project as it's proposed, we have reviewed all of the other conditions. Oh, I have one more. The one on the art, I think it's right at the bottom. Yes. Okay, thank you. There is one more. We're really excited about the suggestion that staff made to provide the art elements, but the wording on there was a little bit, I was going to say heavy-handed, but just a little bit stern, in regards to not providing any logo or anything, or any advertising. What we'd like to do is, in the lower corners of the pictures, say something like, "This is sponsored by Honda, and here's the student that did the art." So, it's kind of like a blue ribbon or something that would be in the corners that acknowledges who did the piece of art. So, we suggested an edit to that, talking about the sponsorship of the sign, as well as recognizing the artist that provided the art. So, we hope that you'll support this. I think it's a great way of blending the two together. What condition is that? It ran, it's on the Toyota, I'm sorry, it's on the Honda condition, and the Lot 11 that faces Shepherd, and it's called the West Elevation is the condition in both of those. One of them, it's number five, and I think the other one, it's number six. So, with that, I believe we've covered all of the items. The project is consistent with the specific plan, consistent with the ordinances, and we hope that you will take the suggested changes and approve the projects as presented. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions?
Yes, this is for Lori's. So, your requests were the clustering?
Yes.
The employee parking as proposed, and the small logo with the artist stating what child probably is going to be the one. So, those are the three things, after all, we've been through. Those are the three requests that are left.
Correct. In regards to the fee condition, we did file the notice of an appeal to negotiate with the City Council on the fees. We appreciate staff notifying us that we needed to do that before this meeting. So, the added comment there about the fees being worked out with the City Council doesn't need to be added.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Commissioner White O'Neal.
For the commission. So, as Commissioner Lopez and I are the representatives on the public art planning committee, even though this is, that ordinance hasn't been finalized yet, but if it does get finalized, there will be a, art will not be allowed to include advertising or corporate signage, because then it's a sign and it's not art. So, if that would be inconsistent, their request here would be inconsistent with what we're thinking the ordinance might read. I know they're not held to that ordinance yet, because it doesn't exist, but since that is a contemporary issue, it's something to think about. It might cause some confusion, or it'll be inconsistent potentially moving forward. And I think it's probably easy enough to accomplish what you want, the child or whoever, the artist who created the art and who sponsored it, without it being a corporate logo or looking like advertising.
And I think that's what the suggestion that we had with sort of the, what is it, the ribbon, would be a good solution.
Probably, yeah, probably, but without the Honda logo, the word Honda. I'm just, just forward-thinking so that we're treating all art displays equally moving forward.
So, for today, we're requesting that the logo wording that we're proposing in the ordinance be approved by the Planning Commission, as we're proposing.
I understand. I'm just pointing out how that would be.
If a city ordinance comes around later, it'll be, you know, we have to follow the city ordinance, but for now, we'd like to do this minor change. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
With respect to the trees, I think if it meets the intent of the specific plan, I'm okay with what the developers are proposing. With respect to parking, I think it's going to be hard to enforce. There is a two-hour time limit on there. I'd be okay with leaving that off of the condition. Sinage, or not the sign, but the art, I like the concept, I just, the vinyl banner, not a fan of the vinyl. And lastly, the curb gutter requirements for the access roads, if fire requires it, I would be okay with leaving that in.
Lori, is the vinyl, I'm assuming that's so that it can be changed?
I'm sorry.
The artwork, I mean, so Commissioner Lopez has an issue with the vinyl, is that, I'm guessing this is something that's going to be taken up and taken down and then replaced?
Correct. Well, I apologize, sorry, I stepped over you. Yes, our idea is that this could be seasonal, change of art, it could be holiday art, it could be a number of different opportunities. You know, if we put a permanent art, it's permanent, it'll be the same thing. Eventually, people are not going to see it as new and exciting. So, I think the idea is to do the stretch vinyl, which is used in a lot of signage, and it would be framed, so you don't get the grommet look, or, you know, and it will give some excitement to the students across the street. They might see their art up there, and I think it's a great way to take a care of a wall that will be seen from the back. So, I hope it, you know, I think it's a good solution.
But that is your plan? It's like a vinyl material or something like that, that initially?
Yes. You know, it is, it's very common now, very hard vinyl, you know, that can be printed on.
I believe we have a "Welcome to Santa Maria" sign on the south of town, that that is exactly what it is.
Right, exactly.
Yes, I'm familiar with the sign. Thank you.
Okay.
Questions?
I'm available for any other questions.
Oh, yeah, we have more. Commissioner Dickerson?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Neta, could you bring up the trees, the dealership's desire for the clumping? Pat, can I, can I ask you some questions?
Sure. Just have a little conversation, I guess, is what it is. You know, the, over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of talk about the trees, and, you know, and I get it, it's a, there's a tug-of-war, it's almost become a zero-sum game between visibility and aesthetics. I mean, I think that's, that's what it's come down to. And, and I was watching your video, and I've been giving a lot of thought to these, to the trees over, over some period of time, and I watched your videos, and I think, I think the thing that, that kind of works me the most is not the fact that you guys want that open, that open space, because I, I get it. I mean, I get it entirely. But that you want the open space, and you want palm trees, which I'm not a particular fan of. And so, I had a, I had an idea, and I wanted to see what your thoughts were with it. I know that you guys have tried to steer away from canopy trees. I get, I think primarily, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, primarily because canopy trees, they're thin, they're tall poles with a tough way on the top, and so the visibility is just, is maximized with palm trees. And then I do realize that canopy trees, if there's a lot of them around, they've drawn birds, there's other things, issues with that. But I was wondering, if, if we went the direction of the, of the clumping that you guys would like to see, but instead of having palm trees everywhere, we had canopy trees as a replacement for those. So, then they're isolated, but they, they flow more with what, for instance, Costco has done. I was looking at that video, and as you move along, going either direction, you either have a lot of canopy trees that look very lush, and then all of a sudden, boom, you have this, this sea of palm trees, or you have a sea of palm trees, and all of a sudden, you have all these canopy trees. I'm wondering, would that, would that be a reasonable compromise, that you actually end up flowing in with what Costco has done, and what, what the city in general has been trying to do, is to create more trees? But then you, you get them clumped, so then they don't impede the views, and they actually, you know, don't provide some of the downsides that you guys were looking for. Is that something that might work?
Well, I think you're, I mean, you're on to something. We're definitely looking for the aesthetics standpoint. We do know that we are really trying to protect that view corridor. We saw that video as you drive by, you have about three seconds to get a good impression. We really want to make sure that we keep that open. And secondly, the beauty, there's some phenomenal shots of, night shots of what it looks like, you know, from a nighttime standpoint. So, the buildings are beautiful. I mean, they really are gorgeous buildings.
For guys who are excited about auto dealerships, I get it, man.
Yeah, so, and it's the brand, you know, it's the brand, and they come around every 10 years and make you spend an enormous amount of money to stay up with that brand. So, to cover that in any way, especially that corridor, we're really nervous about doing that. We're comfortable, and Neta had good points when she asked for the trees along the front. We were able to push those back against the building, so we can control the sightline that they block. So, if they block a isolated piece of the building that's a lucabond siding or something, we're okay with that. You pull it forward, you end up running across that portion. The concern, the reason why we have the massing and the clusters, we've seen them, we've studied them, we've looked at how palms work in a cluster, and they can be staged and can, can grow together and still look adequate, like they're growing on top of each other. Some of the canopy trees, like I think that were early recommended, were honey locusts that can sometimes have 30, 40-foot widths. So, if you clump those trees together, and that canopy grows up, it becomes a giant ball of trees that are kind of competing with each other for the same amount of trees.
But there are other species. I mean, we certainly have, we have our tree man here, and so there are obviously other, other species of canopy trees.
And the ones that we would be, I mean, but the whole concept of the canopy tree, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that they go up and they go out and they create a large canopy. And so, there's shade below it, but they create a large spread. That's what we looked at. So, when we studied the trees, like I think Costco ended up with Chinese pistachio along the, along the drive to try to keep the height down, so we could protect that corridor as much as we could, even from the freeway. And the Chinese pistachio grows slow and can be contained, but a lot of the other natural canopy trees that are left to grow can get really big. So, our concern would be on those corners, instead of having five or six beautiful palms that are all flowing together, we end up having a big, giant clump of tree that, to me, doesn't, aesthetically, doesn't look good. We have, we do have canopy trees all along Shepherd, there's a lot of them along Meehan, they're supposed to start at the driveway along Meehan all the way back, but those are spaced, those are spaced pretty far apart to give room for the canopy to fully blossom and not look like they're competing with each other.
Well, I think that brings, that makes my point, though, to some extent, Pat, because what you're saying is that everywhere except your dealerships are canopy trees. You go anywhere else, and it's canopy trees. And so, you become an isolated area where it's an anomaly. And I'm sure that there are, there are breeds, I mean, we can maybe get a comment, but I mean, sure that there are breeds that are varieties that, that might work well with what you're doing, but still work well with what we need as well.
Well, I don't think, I mean, if you put any canopy tree along the front, it's going to grow to be probably 30 feet high and 20 feet wide.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about an exchange. Instead of, instead, you guys get the, the open space along Bradley, no trees along there at all, but instead of, instead of the palms throughout the facility and in these clumped areas, we move to some, either maybe even fewer, because they might grow a little bit larger, but we move to something that flows with everything that else is, that's around you, and go with a canopy variety that, that would work for, for everybody. And then that way, the whole thing flows, and you get your open space, and...
Yeah, I mean, I personally think the palm trees look nice. It's probably our favorite tree. That's why we're moving it throughout our site. So, the areas where we think along Shepherd, where we can put the canopies trees, we do, but that palm theme is very popular within auto. One, because of visibility, but two, because it allows us, I mean, one could argue that the clumps shouldn't even be there, because they potentially could impede the view, but we think they look nice if placed in the right spot. So, we would prefer the palms, we do have the palms up at our upper side up top, so we think that theme fits well with 35-foot buildings, and, and I do think we are trying to be cooperative and create canopy trees where we can along the backside, but I don't see them up at the front of the building. I see the palms being our best option, and looking nice.
So, ultimately, the answer is no, that that isn't something that you'd be interested in, in trying to work through a swapping of that. Is that, is that accurate, Pat?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
I don't want to offend you at all, but I'd like to say that.
Yeah, so, just for clarification, if you pull up the video again, or you, you know, look at the landscape plans that Kevin Small has come up with, there are canopy trees throughout the parking lots of the project, there are a variety of trees, and then there's the palm trees. And so, we are trying to blend them throughout the project, so that there is that sense of, you know, mending or blending with the projects, but that money shot, which is from Bradley to the buildings, those areas are kept with palm trees. So, I hope you understand that there, there's a combination of things happening on the site, and we did put quite a few... and we did put quite a few more trees on this than is required. But there are some canopy trees in the project as well as palm trees.
Can you please identify the trees from this plan? Maybe Kevin might be able to do that.
I think it's those fruitless olives, some of them. There are olive trees, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name's Kevin Small. I'm the landscape architect for the project. I have a planter design group here in town. There are canopy trees spread throughout the site. The palm trees you see are mainly because of the scale of the renderings, and we're, that's why we used them, because of the scale of the buildings, it's something that can work with the height of it. We also used them in clusters at the entries to create some impact there that you can see from a distance, so you know where you're headed. They'll be uplit at night, so they'll have some visual impact that way. But there are other trees spread out throughout the site in the interior planter areas. It's not just palm trees on the project.
So can you indicate by the, by the designation on the plan, what, does that show the different types of trees, or what's palm, what isn't?
So... So, Nettie, is it possible to zoom in on those?
Probably not.
Can you excuse me for a second so I can go grab my set of plans and I can read to you what the trees are?
Thank you. Are you going to your car or just to there?
There you go.
So included in the plant palette, we have fruitless, fruitless olives, sawleaf zelkova, there's LID trees, which is Western red bud. And, yeah, those are it. The other street trees are what's commonly found it throughout Enos Ranch that we use, which would be on Meehan, Shepherd.
So can you tell us what these, what these are indications of on the plan here? Can you just kind of point, the palm trees, I'm assuming, are the little stars, and then all the other markings are different varieties of trees?
Yes, the round circles that you see, those are all canopy trees.
So there actually looks like there's more canopy trees than there are palm trees?
I believe so.
Mr. Dickerson, Commissioner, questions?
No.
I have a question. So since we all agree that we like palm trees, and they work for your aesthetic and they work for showing off the cars and they, what is the opposition for having them spaced out the way the, the development permit is requesting?
It's primarily the view. That it was, to me, I've done, I've been at this 28 years, okay? I did a lot of work at the, for the Irvine Company, which is like Palm Central. I always felt as a designer that you get more impact out of putting several of them together because of the way you look at them from a distance as opposed to a single palm If we had done a different sort of plant palette in the whole Enos Ranch, I wouldn't have an opposition to lining both sides of the streets, but I would have done it differently. I think that, given the situation, the view lines that we have from the freeway and trying to, you know, meet the planning department's wishes partway, you know, sort of meeting together, that that was a compromise that we could do.
And so the goal is, the, the sightline is really the buildings. You're not so much worried about making sure the cars are visible from the street. You're afraid of blocking the view of the buildings.
It's to keep that person's eye going through. They see that big Toyota site.
And I really, you really feel strongly that, that the narrow, high palm tree is, is too much of a block?
It would be right in the line of it. You know, you'd be a sort of a, a block every couple of seconds. So to me, it was better to put them together. You get a bigger, a combined effect of the, the heads of the palm trees that you would see from the freeway.
Other question? Questions?
Yes, so staff is okay with the palm trees. They're saying that's acceptable.
Correct. There is a subsection in the findings because the specific plans required that the planning commission approve the use of palms. On each PD permit, there's a subsection of findings that allows for the use of palms on this site.
And palms have always been in the discussion since we started this conversation with a specific plan, and the view sites, the view lines have always been in discussion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions?
So I, I'm there with the applicants because I didn't have the opportunity to be involved with this project because I had a conflict of interest and I had to recuse myself because of a client. So I really wanted to understand all the issues, and I understood there was a lot of them, so I was actually surprised to hear Ms. Tamura say we're down to three big issues, which is great. It shows that the city and the applicant have worked together and have compromised. If the staff is telling me that they're okay with palm trees, I do agree that clustering palm trees is better because it does look nicer to have more palm trees together. Singular throughout doesn't look as nice if we are going to talk about palm trees. The employee parking, I think the proposed is good. You have to give your employees notice and let them know. We can't really police it as it's stated. It's going to be based on a complaint basis, but I think that meets the requirement. The logo, I, being involved with a lot of nonprofit and philanthropic giving in the past, when you're dealing with companies who have a lot of money or dealerships, they have this competition that they start. It's just the nature of people who have a lot of money. And if they see someone donate something, it really helps because other people will donate as well, right? If I'm sitting at the table and someone comes and offers chocolates for all of us and I buy one, then other people feel that maybe they want to buy a chocolate too from this kid who is selling a box of chocolates. I really think that putting the logo in the small area like that will help us in that it will allow other corporate sponsors to, to show that they gave to the community or that they're contributing to the public art, because art is such a big issue that we need to have more of in the city. And I think that would encourage more art for the city, for other corporate sponsors to be involved in that. So that's why I think the logo, using the corporate logo would be good in terms of allowing it to stay like that. The last thing, the gutters, if fire's stating that that's what they want, then I agree with that as well. That's it.
We do have some written correspondence with Mike Grogan. I'd like to speak to him. You have three minutes.
Mike Grogan, Santa Maria, Benin School District. We are going to be the car dealers' neighbor. And first of all, I want to say Pat and his team have done a really good job of addressing how our uses are going to be planned, because the fact that they're not putting their doors, their roll-up doors for their service bays up against the Shepherd Drive is, is a benefit to us, and the murals are a benefit to us. And to put a little history on it, you know, homeowners, their ownership have been leaders in the community for a long time, and they've obviously put a lot of thought into this because they didn't come to us and say, hey, you know, we're going to do this. They just did it. You know, they, if they would have been putting doors and rolling cars in and out there, I would have probably been at meetings saying, hey, we don't want to do that. I didn't have to do that. I am here to talk about Shepherd Drive and to share with you a little bit about our use so you understand the impact that all these uses are going to have, okay? We're going to have 25 to 30 bus trips into our school a day. 60 to 70 percent of the students will be bused because we won't let kids cross major arteries, okay? So they're going to have to, and the way the site was laid out for us through the, working with the city and, and KT Commercial, you know, Shepherd Drive couldn't go through and hit on, for a through shot onto College Drive. So the cul-de-sac is designed to make sure that our buses can make a turn around it. So the two-hour, and I think the two-hour parking is important because it's not only the car dealers' employees, it's also the, the Eastern Apartments. You know, they're going to be parking on the streets too, and there are, there will be times when our parents need to park on the streets. So I think the two-hour parking is important. I think employee parking, usually with everybody else, is dictated to the state, to, to the site. You have to provide on your site your employee parking. If it's going to be enforced, it's going to have to be the city that enforces it, right? So the city would have to go out and mark tires like they do in Monterey. I don't want to have to come back to the city council or the commission and say, hey, we have a problem in that there's never any parking in the streets. So I think it's important that we are aware that there will be a lot of competing uses for the street. We're going to compete for uses. Eastern Apartments is going to compete for uses on Shepherd Drive, as is, you know, the pub, the public in general. The park, you know, we're going to have four basketball courts, a soccer field, and a baseball diamond, which when school's not in session, are going to be open to the public. So, you know, there are going to be a lot, there's going to be a lot of use, and especially between 7:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon when those 30 bus trips come through and parents drop off their kids. So I think those are important conditions to keep in the plan. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
A lot of practice.
Is there a closing statement, Lori? Thank you for your words, and at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. I haven't spoken on this, but I, I would like to thank you so much for getting the art involved in these buildings. We have had nothing but issues with trying to fund art and the fact that you're ponying up, and these, these structures that you're building aren't cheap. The vinyl isn't cheap. There's, there's nothing cheap about what you're doing, and you're taking this on, and I commend you for that, and I thank you for the, for the community. I think it's a great idea, and I do appreciate it. Having said that, I, I would like you to be cognizant of the fact that those parapet walls are going to be very short, probably 42 inches on the top of your units, and I think that you have different sized cars. And even in the rendering on this deal, you could see the cars, and I know it's a car lot, I know, you're going to, you're going to have cars at a car lot, but if you could limit the edges, the, the perimeter of that parking on the upper structure to the smaller cars, the lower cars, and get the SUVs and stuff back in the middle, I think just from a perspective of, you know, enjoying the art and not seeing the cars on top, you're still going to see the roof a little bit, but you're not going to see a truck up there or something. It's just something to consider in your business plan. As far as the gutters, I'm going to go with the fire marshal. It's a condition that I myself have had to abide by. And the, the problem with the temporary streets is, as you probably know, is once you contaminate that base street, it is no longer usable as asphalt. So temporary roads have always been a necessity, but they're problematic no matter what you do. It's going to cost a little bit of money to get the temporary road and then turning it into a permanent road. So I'm going to go with the gutters on that one. I feel that's, that's what the fire marshal wants. We've just, I was a part of this commission when we discussed the specific plan, and we talked at length about trees, sizes, locations, and the species. And I'm very comfortable with what you guys have come up with. I like the clumping. I like the way that you've moved the trees back to the building. I think that it's very, it's, it's a good look. It, it covers up the building in spots. It's, it's doing what we want to do or what, what I think should be done, but it has still given you that, that visibility that we worked so hard on the specific plan to get you. I mean, we, we had a lot of meetings and a lot of talk about these issues at the previous meetings, and I think that you've done a really good job of addressing that. And I'm not a fan of blocking buildings with trees. If you go to Arroyo Grande up behind the Starbucks, the minute you get behind the Starbucks and you look at that shopping center, you can't tell what's there. There's, there's absolutely no way to read the signs on the buildings because of these large trees that are in the way, and I don't think that's going to work. We're, we're trying to get a business here. We're trying to get it to flourish, and I think we, in my opinion, this is a very nice way to do that. So I, I like your idea. I thank you for adding so many trees. They cost money to trim. They cost money to water. It's an additional cost to your business, so thank you. Am I missing anything? I think that's... The employee parking is a tough one for me. I, I hear what Mr. Grogan says, but yet I don't want to have to encumber you with being a, a parking cop. You have done what every other business in the city has, we asked for it, you have supplied that for us. And, and one of the issues, you've actually given us a little bit more parking. So I, I understand your concerns on Shepherd, and I think that is being addressed by the two-hour parking. If I am an employee and I know I'm going to get a parking ticket, I'm certainly not going to park on the street when there's adequate parking on my business. So I, I do find this, this condition would be onerous to the business owner. I think this is a city, a, a city item when we're, when we're talking about two-hour parking. I, I think that there's going to be a meter, I mean, I've had those marks on my tires before, and I'm, I'm very cognizant of that, that it gets expensive. So I don't think you're going to, I don't think there's going to be an employee parking issue with that two hours. Now, if it was a, if there was non-regulated, I would, I would say, yes, you're going to, we're going to have to do something. So I'm, I'm kind of with you on that one in your court. I, I don't want to have some, I don't want you guys chasing around your employees. I, I do think that you've adequately parked them, and, and I, and I know from, from working with your staff that they all seem to be pretty bright young people, that I don't think they're going to want to pay for parking tickets. So that's, that's, that's my opinion, and leave it to... Oh, the logo? Thank you, Mary Bell. There's a lot of stuff to go over. I, I don't mind the identifier at the bottom. I, I hear what Commissioner White O'Neill is saying about a big logo. I don't want to see a big Honda sign up there. No, that's not art. But a little identifier in the bottom, I think that's very, I think it's important. I think we want to know whose that art is, and, and I, and I do agree with Commissioner Hernandez that it's, it is going to create some sort of a, a competition between you guys and maybe other dealerships who can, and we need that because the art is hard to afford, and you guys are saying, hey, we're going to give you art. So having a little logo at the bottom and who did the artwork, I don't have any issue with that. As Commissioner White O'Neill stated, if there is an ordinance, you guys are going to have to abide by it in the future. So I, I really don't see that as a problem, having an identifier on any of your art. And again, thank you for the art. Thank you. Commissioners?
Sure. Let me just go over the, the simple things first. I, I agree with Commissioner Seifert about the, the gutters and, and others. I, I think that that should be, should be left in there. I also agree about the, about the parking. I think the two-hour parking probably solves that problem, especially if, now, of course, the dirty little secret in Santa Maria is that we don't have any, we don't have anybody actually ticketing anybody for any parking violations. So unless we can generate enough revenue off of that little piece of land to actually hire somebody, then I don't suppose that there are going to be any white chalk marks on any tires. I don't think we have a meter made.
No, we don't.
Do we?
It'll be on a complaint basis.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dickerson, members of the commission, we do, we do ticket cars and we do, we do have the police services technicians that, that take care of it.
I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I've seen the white marks.
Is that relatively new? Because I think, somebody mentioned that we didn't.
We don't have, we don't have paid parking and we don't have, you know, traditional meter made, but we have people that enforce parking.
Okay. And that's probably, they go out if it's a, I'm sorry.
Primarily 72-hour violations, for sure. But we'll do two-hour or no parking zones. They'll, they'll go out and they'll tow immediately under the right circumstances.
Did you get a ticket?
No, I've seen it personally.
No, I've seen it personally in my neighborhood where the neighbors have called, complained, and they were sitting with 72 hours and 24 hours, and they still chalk, they use a chalk.
Sure, I've experienced that, too.
There is people doing that, yes.
As far as the logo for art, I agree also that I think it'll probably spur maybe a little bit of competition, at the very least. Quite frankly, if a dealership or somebody is going through the expense of putting art out there, I don't begrudge them, you know, telling, telling the community, hey, you know, we appreciate art, and it should, and we've paid for this, and there you go. So I have no problems with that. As far as the trees go, I've made my opinion known. I think it'd be better to have canopy trees, but I think aesthetically also that clumping the tree, the palm trees probably is the better way of going if we're going to go that direction. And so I think clumping them and maintaining, and rather than having a, what I look at personally is a series of sticks in the ground, I would rather give you guys the view. So from my standpoint, it's not the best of situations, but I think that is what it is. Mary Bell, have I left out anything?
No.
No? Okay. I do have one thing that I didn't bring up, I brought it up once, once we bring it back, brought it back to us, and that is the Lot 8 and Lot 11. Lot 11, of course, we're voting on, I do not believe that either Lot 8, and obviously we're not dealing with Lot 8 right now, but I don't believe Lot 11 should be voted on. I think maybe we should continue a lot, that particular one. There was a lot of discussion amongst the planning commissioners that that splash and dash should be swapped out for that and put on Lot 11 rather than Lot 8. And the basics, I find the argument flows from exactly all the arguments that we have been pounded with by the, for the trees. And that is that if we want to entice a dealership, we want to give them as much viewability from 101 as possible. Putting a car wash in a prime location just doesn't do it for me. We have two open spots. We have 8 and 11. They should just be flip-flopped. That's my opinion. But until we, as a body, make up our minds on both of those, because once again, Lot 8 has been, has not been brought forward to us, I don't think we should, I don't think we should lock in Lot 11 and allow that to start moving forward in the process because as a body, we haven't really decided yet what the consensus is for those two lots and which should go where. So from that standpoint, I don't believe that we should, we should deal with Lot 11 right now. I think we should, like I said, continue it until we deal with the two lots and make a decision. And that's my, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner White O'Neill?
So I think we're all in agreement on the curbs and gutters. As far as the logo on the art, obviously, yes, you'll be held to whatever standard ultimately gets decided. Potentially vinyl signage wouldn't be considered art anyway in a new ordinance, so that's just, you can do whatever you want now because there is no ordinance. As far as the parking, I mean, I personally think changing the language in the permit is a little belt-and-suspenberish for this purpose. I mean, I think the two-hour parking eliminates the likelihood that your employees are going to park there. I understand you don't want the onus to be on you, and you feel like this language will change that. I don't think it's necessary to change it. I think the standard language that the city provides is adequate, and you will not be penalized one way or the other. So I think the changing of the parking language is unnecessary. And the trees, I'm grateful that you've added more trees than you were required to. I personally feel the more trees, the better, and I think your, your solution is both aesthetically nice and meets the needs of the city. Because we have so much parking lot in that area, I just don't want it to be this gaping wasteland of cement, and the more trees, the better, and how you configure them, I think you've made, made a good choice. And I think those are, is that it?
You mentioned the logo already.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's it.
Can I make one last comment? About the art thing, I mean, is that, have you guys actually written the regs for that yet, or is it moving, I mean, is that still something you can edit and fiddle around with?
It's a written document. Lori would disagree, but it's a written document.
I mean, it hasn't gone before anybody yet, though, right? Maybe, maybe you could retake a look at that, and given what the dealerships do, think about businesses across town, maybe at the very, maybe like the signage ordinances, you could put, you could have a, something about limiting the size of logos and things like that. So that's just something that you might be able to do before you move that thing forward.
And materials.
Yeah.
Oh, and then I guess with regard to your idea about not approving Lot 11, I agree. I think approving things that are still so speculative is, I think, hamstringing the city when we don't need to.
I think we're down to you, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I thought I read off the items that I was okay with. The parking, the two-hour, I thought was gonna be taken care of. The curb and gutter, fire required it, that's fine. The trees, I was okay with what the applicants presented. The, with the art, I thought it was okay. I just, the vinyl material, unless it gets changed out often, if it gets tattered, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the logo at the bottom. Commissioner Dickerson did say something pretty interesting.
Just warm?
Yeah, because I was thinking of circulation at that car wash, and I know it's not part of this, and 11 is part of this. I just, I mean, I don't know if we can continue it and explore it, at least number 11, with the Commissioner Dickerson.
Well, I'm sure we can. So Phil. So an applicant has come to us with a business plan and showed us what they want to do with their property. Are we in any position to tell them that they have to move that, that car wash, or that we, because we don't feel that it's a good location? What power do we actually have?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you can defer action on Lot 11 and, I believe, was it 5 and 6 as well? Just 11, okay. I wasn't sure. You said something about flipping. I wasn't sure what you were referring to.
In Lot 8. 8 and 11.
Okay, so yeah, you could defer action on Lot 11 and take action on the rest of the items.
Thank you.
Although, I mean, I don't think that the design of the, the location of the car wash is, been established for Lot 11, though? Is that correct?
The splash and dash is proposed on Lot 8. There was a preliminary design submitted, but the PD permits have not moved through review or are being brought today for your consideration.
Sorry, I was confused as to the location.
Should we hear from the applicant?
I think we need to open it back up to the public, and we need to hear from the applicant on this particular. We did not address this previously. Thank you.
Again, Lori Tamora, thank you. The splash and dash car wash location was in the original specific plan. It was identified in the final decision-makers by the city council, and the strategy was to make it a central location viewed by that intersection, bring customers into the car wash. They'll have the ability for them to have kiosks that will see cars inside there. You know, it's a centerpiece for this property. There's been, never been a consideration for it to go to the Lot 11. I don't even think where, the way it's designed, it would fit accordingly as the site narrows down at that location. So we would ask that the planning commission approve Lot 11. The splash and dash will be submitted very soon, so the architectural plans and elevations and all of the design work has been completed on the project, and we're ready to move forward with that application also. So at this point, we believe that the city council's already made a decision in regards to the location, and we're implementing their action. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a question I have for staff. Did the city council already approve this? Is that correct?
With the specific plan, the city council approved that Area 4, so the overall lots 2 through 11 could have a specific list of uses. New auto sales with ancillary used auto sales, service in association with those auto sales, 10,000 square feet of retail use, and a single car wash facility. The specific plan did not designate where that car wash facility needed to or was designed to go. It just allowed that clumping of uses.
Neta, if you could go to our presentation, the first exhibit shows the exhibit that was presented throughout the public hearing process by Nick Tompkins, and shows the car wash at the corner of Meehan and Bradley.
This is what we saw back in '15?
Yes. Yeah. Oops, we gotta, yeah, there you go. At the very beginning. So we're not doing anything counter to what was planned, and I am actually glad that we have an opportunity to look at this exhibit because it was the tool for literally everything that's happened out there from the very beginning between Lowe's, Costco, Bradley, West, School Site, Easton. All of those items were illustrated and shown on. Thank you so much, Neta.
Sir, it's freezing.
I keep, I'm gonna just ramble for a moment. There you go. So the car wash is shown in the corner of Meehan and Bradley. And again, this is our exhibit that we presented throughout previous planning commission two and a half years ago, city council, even in the exhibits that the planning staff had illustrated, the car wash at this corner during their presentations at the city council meetings. So I appreciate the concern, the suggestion. Lot of money and energy has gone into implementing this plan, and a lot of effort, and we would like to maintain the work that's been done already.
I can't quite see the, where does it say, does it, does it show the retail elements?
In the corner, initially, if you could, I don't know if you can blow that up. The three little buildings on the north side were the concept of the retail.
Yeah, but it doesn't, but it doesn't say retail, does it? I mean, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, that this is kind of a big-picture thing of more or less what you want. You don't actually even say that it's a car wash. That could just be another retail space. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is that you want to point to that and say, the city council approved this, and we cannot deviate or should not deviate from it, but now we're getting down to the nuts and bolts and the specifics, and I'm saying that as a commissioner, there was question, you were mistaken, there was a question at the study session specifically about this, and so we certainly have the right to continue this so then a proper airing of this could be done at another study session or, or another public hearing. Is that accurate, Lori?
Yes, it is. What I'm reminding the planning commission is that two years ago, the same discussion was occurring, and the plans that were presented at that time showed a car wash at that location. And that is a car wash, and it was presented to both the planning commission and the city council, and we have been building on those decisions throughout the last two years.
But how does this mesh, how does this mesh? And once again, all this conversation is what I would have preferred to have at a study session, which is why I'm talking about continuing this. How does this mesh with every argument that has been made about how you guys want to attract the best dealerships you can, and the way to do that is by having that 101 corridor so then people can actually see the dealership? And there you have a prime location.
If I may, maybe just to remind you, the video that we provided, Meehan is not, that intersection's not gonna be seen from 101. The core, the critical intersections were for homeowners and Toyota, and as you start getting towards Meehan, you're blocked by Costco. So just to remind you how this lays out.
So you don't see that as a prime location? And you, and you don't see it as being a better location than, than Lot, than Lot 11?
I'd be happy to talk about that if you'd like.
Yes, please, Pat.
Yeah, it's, and I know the earlier one, I think we identified at the earlier plan all the places that were auto, and then the one corner was the car wash. If you could see it, it's actually the whole design of the car wash, including the roundabout and everything else. So it has been in from the very beginning when we sat down. In fact, when we put this whole plan together, we initially had all our auto dealerships lined up completely along the 101 freeway. And then we worked with Nick and said, hey, we would like to move and slide ourselves back and over so that we could get some of the synergy of the Costco traffic. So that's how Costco went from being up top to being down below. Costco came down below, gave room for Lowe's to go up top. We did that because we wanted to have the freeway visibility, but we also had to measure that with the synergy that you get by having other traffic and people driving by. If you face just the freeway, your whole backside would be the thoroughfare of Bradley, and no one would see the cars driving. So we really were trying to effectually get both. That corner is primarily set up that, number one, we're gonna be able to position our dealerships so that we send all our existing customers to that location that will circulate throughout that site. It might be 3, 4, 500 cars a day on the busy days. We're building that, that car wash to be able to attract anybody that comes into Costco, anybody that comes out of the area. It's gonna be like a magnet, pull them down into our corridor. We know the car business. We know that's where we make our bread and butter. The more people we can bring into our area is why we moved out of the way for Costco. The reason why we put that corner, which, not only is that corner gonna attract customers to that, but the whole front area of the corner has cars on it. So we have Honda vehicles that will be on display all along the corner, and that's shown on the plans. So you have the front, the frontage, but behind it is where the vehicles will all assemble. We have built-in kiosks inside with our car dealerships, so if the 300 customers we have have 20 minutes getting a full serve, we'll be looking at Hondas, Toyotas, whatever we can actually show them, because it's, costs a lot of money to get 20 minutes of 300 people's times per day. So we think that will translate into auto sales.
Pat, is the, is the lower building that we see there, kind of in the center at this point, that's the splash and dash? I mean, in theory?
Yes.
Right behind the center red tree?
It's kinda hard to see it from here, but...
Oops.
Let's take another...
Nice, Ryan.
But rest assured, though, we know, we know what our job is, and that's to move iron and sell cars. So we want the visibility, which you see here, as you move, Lori's right, as you move down, it becomes harder to look through that to get and see the top edge. We would love for that sign that, you're right there, we would love for that sign to be approved, and we'll probably be bringing it back to you so we can actually show the other brands that can't, that don't have the direct freeway visibility on that sign.
My question is...
We would love for that sign that you're right there, we would love for that sign to be approved and we'll probably bring it back to you so we can actually show the other brands that can't, that don't have the direct freeway visibility on that sign.
My question is, is that, is that a rendering of the, of the splash and dash?
I think if it's just to the left of that sign, straight through there, I would say yes, that's, that would be the location.
So, my question is, I mean, if you, if you showed a building that was of the same height and, and size of the other buildings that we were seeing for the auto dealerships, then you would see it from the, you would see it from 101. It would, it would actually get advertisement and visibility.
That, for that brief second, you would see that. The difference is you would have to compromise your site layout by taking your building, shoving it all the way to the very corner of the lot, which doesn't make any sense from an auto standpoint. So, that's, that's, this is the optimum usage of this 26 acres for us to effectively run our businesses, including the retail. I mean, understand, when we originally were going to do it, we had 13 acres that was going to be overlaid across from our existing Toyota dealership. We stepped up to 26 acres and reached out. That's why some of these acreage isn't full yet because we're still building inventory to try to attract dealers. We have to make the business decisions on our part to put things in the right places for us to make it effectively work. This is what that design is. And I, you know, I, I hope that you guys trust that we're doing the things that we know will help us sell cars. Retail is only there, we're not going to try to make a buck off of a sandwich. We're trying to bring in a couple hundred people a day, employees milling around, customers that decide, "I don't know if I want to get a car right now, I got to go to lunch. Well, let's just walk over and grab a sandwich." Boom, walk back in, hopefully take another look at a car. It's all designed to kind of work and feed off each other. We bought the extra acreage to actually create it. You wouldn't see that car wash where you see Toyota. You wouldn't see that car wash where you see Chevrolet. Probably wouldn't even see it where we have Lexus. That's why you see it at that location. Plus, it's the busiest intersection. And otherwise, the only thing you would have there would be just inventory of cars. You're not going to put a dealership building that close and up front. And you'll see that when we get the plans because we have the plans pretty much done. It's a beautiful building. It's tall. It's stately. It'll, it will, it will fit in with what we're doing with that auto center, which is first class and we're going to blow people away when they come to Santa Maria and shop for the car, just by everything that they're surrounded by. So, that's the whole goal and I'd like to put a plug in, if you don't mind, for that big sign that we would like to put up eventually because we have approval for a, I think, a 75-foot-high sign or something along the freeway.
We may want to stick with one thing at a time.
Don't pick that scab too early, man.
Try it.
Thank you. Good, good sales pitch. So, this is the intersection at Costco. So, all the people coming out of Costco after they've negotiated all those twists and turns that they're complaining about are going to come out to the open highway, they're going to drive across the street and all those dirty canopy trees that they've been parking under, they're going to, they're going to drive into that, that car wash and they're going to get their cars washed. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, they're going to get in line because they're going to, they're going to do 500 dealership cars in there a day. So, they're going to get in the line to get their car washed. Is that the other way of looking at it, Mr. Seifert?
Well, actually, depending on the car wash, 500 cars, what is your estimate? I mean, that's probably just a fraction of what you're...
I mean, you know, those other store, we can do 3, 4, 500. Might be a little different because this one, all the splash and dashes will feed to this one. So, Orca, Donovan Road, the other one, will feed to this one when you want to have the full serve done. And that's the part about capturing that customer for 25 minutes. I mean, we're, we're just chomping at the bits of capturing that customer surrounded by auto dealerships with discounts for a car wash and take a test drive. I mean, but it, there's a whole plan around how this is going to help us sell cars and we can do a lot of volume out of there.
So, this is a get out of your car?
This one will allow you to either stay in your car if you want or get out of your car and we'll do, you know, the full wipe down, vacuum, everything else. That's where we have them captured and that's where we're going to sell them cars when they come out of Costco.
We should only capture them if they get out of their car.
Is that...
We should only capture them if they get out of their car.
And get assembled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Thank you for your input. Personally, I'm not going to, I don't feel comfortable telling these guys how to run their business. I think they've put a lot of time and effort into it and I understand what you're saying about, we discussed this a long time ago about the visibility and getting those premium lots. Well, I think a lot of time and money has been spent from these guys figuring out the best way to spend their money, the best way to set up their business. I like the, I like the buildings. I like the layouts of what they're saying. I, I was surprised too that the car wash was still there because of the view, but, you know, understanding your business plan, I certainly can understand why you're wanting it there. And obviously, we're not even looking at that project yet. This came up because of Lot 11 and I don't think I would be in favor of trying to do a, trying to tell these guys that I want them to swap lots and I think their business should be over here and they should have this business over here. They're investing millions of dollars, which is not my money and I think that they've probably created a pretty good business plan here and they've dealt with a lot of very smart people that know business and how this is going to work. So, I understand your, your concern and why you brought it up because, I mean, that was always the sell, was the visibility. And obviously, you guys have taken this into account and you're saying that you're going to do better with a car wash there than a, than a car dealership. And I can, I can understand that. Thank you.
I just think, I, I guess I disagree at some sort of core level with what, what you said. This commission, every time we make a decision, is telling a business what they can and cannot do every single time. So, the fact that we want to modify something is no different than the other. Yes, they put a lot of money into it, but this is a project that is huge and therefore has a lot of money going into it. But is it any different than a small, a, a, a small set of apartments and asking somebody to separately meter them or whatever it is that's being asked?
It's hugely different. We're asking them to take their apartment building and put it on a different lot.
We're asking a facing of one of the apartments to be dealt with in a different way. That's what we're talking about. And really, all we're talking about is, is the discussion. I mean, if you're saying that any of the commissioners cannot say, you know, "We had a discussion about this and we had not resolved that just a week ago," it's not a long time ago, just a week or so ago, about whether or not we, we wanted to have more information about that and whether it should be here versus there. I mean, so, so what? None of the, none of the things people bring up, now we can, we can continue? This is one, this is one small element that I'm only asking for a discussion on, not a decision on. I'm not even saying that I would decide one way or the other once we had that discussion.
I think if the discussion wants to be about Lot 11 and what we want Lot 11 to look like as a car dealership, which is what they brought to us, that that's a, that's a reasonable request. I think if it's a matter of we're telling them that, I think they need to switch their businesses from Lot 8 to Lot 11, I don't think that's a reasonable request, in my opinion. And I, and I think that changing the facade or changing the colors or changing the, the location of any kind of portico or thing like that, yes, that's totally in our purview. But to actually tell a business, no. I don't, you've got a couple lots here and I don't like it here, I want it over here. I don't believe that's true. I think that it's up to these guys to decide where they want and it's up to us to say if we like that business or if we want to change that business, you know, any way as far as it looks to the city and to the planning. I mean, that's the, the colors, the, the, the design of the building, yes, I agree with you. But as far as telling them, "No, you got to move it to another lot," I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that.
All right. I, I, once again, I, I think that a discussion, and maybe this discussion's being had now, but a discussion by, by the full commission as far as what we think would be best for the city is, is a fair discussion to have and especially for a plot of land that is this big where we've already made many suggestions for many businesses as far as what they should or should not do. And in fact, we've actually denied a lot of businesses what they want to do. That's what we do. And to sit there and say, "You know, I'm not, I'm not going to be willing to say that a business should or should not go in a specific place." We've cast votes about that all along. Now, it's not necessarily a swapping thing, but we swap other elements of smaller projects. This is a monstrously big project for us and so, any change that we make is going to be a large impact, be it the number of trees, be it, be it swapping things. But that's, that's what we do. And we can palm it off and say, "No, we don't do that." Well, then, the next time somebody comes up with a small apartment building and we think that it's not facing the right way or there's something wrong aesthetically with it, well, we shouldn't be telling them what, how they, how they do their, their business.
Should we be telling them to turn it into something other than an apartment building? Should we be telling them what, how their business is supposed to be ran or what business they should be, which business they should be in?
Should we tell them whether or not a parking lot should be in one place versus another? Should we tell them whether or not they should make their corridor wider so then you can get a fire truck through or a corridor wider so you have more parking? We just did that.
Yeah, and I, I don't have a problem with that. But I'm, but changing the whole lot...
But the two are the same. It's just a matter of scale.
Okay. So, I, I think we're not getting anywhere on this, Robert?
I think it's fair.
I'm pretty sure we're done with this conversation for now. So, what we really have in front of us is Lot 8 isn't here tonight. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at Lot 11. So, if you want to make a motion and we separate that and do what you want to do, that's fine. But I think what we need to do is concentrate on what's in front of us, wait till this thing comes up, and talk about it. But I don't, I don't believe that, well, I'm certainly not in favor of telling them how to run their business or to take this and put it somewhere else. So, for tonight, I, I think that discussion is, is done. So, I think it's back to us and it's time for more discussion or a motion.
Whoever makes a motion, I would, I would like, I would like FG, Lot 11, pulled out and made as a separate motion. I would appreciate that.
Is there, it's quiet over here. Is anyone who wants to, you want to take a five minute?
Are we gonna, are we gonna have more discussion because I need to use the rest? Well, I think making the motion is going to take a long time too because there's a lot of different motions.
Thank you. We're going to take a five minute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Quarter to ten. Let's get this thing moving. It's back in our court. So, Neda has created a little slide to help us with our decisions today.
I have. I do want to allow Deputy City Attorney Phil Cinco to weigh in on one of the conditions.
Yeah, I would like to ask for some clarification on what your wishes were with respect to the change of condition, or the condition concerning employee parking. I thought your consensus was to leave it the same, and...
I thought it was the opposite.
Okay, well, I would like to speak to that, if that's the case, before you make your final decision. The implication of the change is that somehow the city would hold the applicant responsible if their employees park off-site voluntarily, where they're not supposed to. And that's certainly not what the... That's certainly not what staff would do. We're not going to hold the applicant responsible for employees that park off-site. I mean, to the extent that the language is trying to say the same thing. I mean, the language, the current condition, just simply says, "Employee parking shall be onsite, and not impact the public streets." I don't see how changing that accomplishes the city's purpose. I mean, if the concern is that employees... They can't control their employees if they decide to park off-site, and they don't want to be held responsible for that. That's clearly not going to happen. That's not what the intent of that language is. So, to the extent that the commission had concerns that that might be the case, I don't think the change is necessary. Certainly from an enforcement point of view.
I think that any time that we make a solid rule, I don't think it's wise for us to tell someone that they don't have to abide by it. So, I'm not understanding you. I mean, here we are telling them that all employee parking shall occur onsite, period.
Correct.
And not overflow the impacting surrounding public streets. So, that tells me that we're requiring them, by law, to park on their property. And that is an actionable and enforceable-
Well, if, to the extent that the employees violate that, we're not going to hold the property owner responsible.
Who are you going to hold responsible?
They have to provide enough parking for their employees.
Which they have.
Okay, well, then, that's fine.
Right, that's what I was saying.
So, what is the problem? I don't understand.
Well, I guess I had concerns about "shall reasonably notify its employees to park onsite." That seems to imply that there's some indication that the city would hold the applicant responsible for employees not parking onsite after they're supposed to. I guess I was just saying that that's not going to happen. That's just not how we would enforce the law.
But if we make this a law, it could happen.
But it's a sort... This is what we do for all projects. We require all employees to be... All parking to be provided onsite. There's nothing different or special about this project.
But we don't make conditions saying that, and they have met all of our requirements for parking.
I think this is boilerplate parking language, isn't it?
My understanding is it's pretty boilerplate, yeah. It's similar to the language that was used in the eastern apartments.
Chen, would you like to weigh in on this?
I bet he wouldn't.
Yeah, I didn't really want to either, but I misunderstood what was going on.
And before Chen weighs in, I might weigh in, too. The way we were reading these two is one of the conditions asks the business to ensure that all their employees are parking on their property. And the way the other condition reads is, "The business owner shall provide the space for the employee, and they will ask their employees to please park there." So, they read differently. So, one says that your business is requiring your employees to park on your property. The other one says, "You will provide the space for that to occur." They're a little bit different. So, I just wanted to point that out as you're deciding.
They look different to me. Thank you.
I think the statute, as it's written, doesn't say anything about the employer being responsible. It's just "all employee parking shall occur onsite." That's not the employer's responsibility to police that. It's just the parking shall incur. I don't think it's necessary to change the language. I think the parking standard is met. The onus is not on the employer. It is on the person parking their car. And changing the language for one applicant, why are we doing that for one applicant when we don't do it for other applicants? It's when you start parsing out every single word on every single statute, then you have no... You have no standard, is my thought.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Wain-O'Neill? Any other discussion on this?
Wasn't the request to delete this entirely?
I believe it's the applicant's request.
No, no. The request in the letter states they wanted to delete this, and I think this was the compromise between the city and the applicant. That's what I understood.
Oh, it's an earlier point. This revised condition was brought forth by UPC today.
But their initial request was to delete it.
Correct. In the letter, their request was deletion.
Yes.
And then, today, UPC sent a follow-up with this revision.
It wasn't part of a negotiated middle ground. I mean, it's just a modification they decided to come forward with. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you need to speak on this, Lori?
Yes. If you could look at the staff reports that you're looking at, and the item just before this particular provision outlines the requirement for each one of these dealerships to have the required parking onsite. And, so, we felt, in our initial letter, that this second provision was redundant. And so, that's why we asked for it to be deleted. Over the course of the last three days, with a number of conversations with staff and others, we tried to come up with language that took the owners off of the owners to police Shepherd. And this is our suggested wording. And we hope that it will be supported. But, our preference would have been to delete the whole thing, because I have not seen this kind of condition on any other project.
Ryan, is that true? Is this a condition just to this project?
This is specific to this project. And the intent behind it was the concern about the intensity of uses of this dead-end street with the school and the park, and allowing for customers to park here. We were just concerned with there being a potential major issue with that in the future, and so, that was our recommendation.
So, what do you think now, after all the discussion and the two-hour street? Do you think that this is going to be a problem? If we do change this to the applicant's request? Or do you still think that we need to have the original condition?
I think with the applicant's request, is they're ensuring they're providing the space available for their employees to park onsite. And I think it would accomplish that. I think because there's a two-hour requirement, it does make it very difficult for the employees. However, we know that folks could go out and move their cars. That's kind of complicated and not ideal, but I guess it's plausible as well, depending on who we are.
I'd like to see him ask for that break.
So, you know, at the end of the day, the idea is that there's a lot of service area. There's a lot of employees with the auto dealers, and we didn't want to plug up the streets with employees, and wanted to maximize the space for the public and for the customers. And so, whether or not they park on this property, there's also language in here that would allow for an agreement for an off-site parking.
If it became a problem.
Right, exactly.
And that's on all the sites? That verbiage is on all of those?
This verbiage is specific to these parcels in front of you, yeah.
Yes, the auto dealers. I mean, I read in each one of those it had that same specific.
It is. Correct, yeah.
Yes. So, okay.
So, the amended language proposed does meet the intent that you're trying to reach?
It meets the intent... The language is not as strong for us to be able to enforce, because if down the road, we find that the way that Shepherd is functioning in such a way that there's a lot of employees using it, we could go to the auto dealers, and the way that language reads is they could say, "Well, we're providing the space for them." And then, we would have no way to say, "Okay, but actually, you have to park your employees on your site," or come up with a plan to park employees somewhere. That hook... I don't read that hook in this amended language. So, it would be a little bit more difficult for staff to enforce, in my opinion.
Right, but is... Didn't we just hear that it wouldn't be on them with the language?
The way that the enforcement-
So, it's contrary. That's what I'm hearing. Like, we're not going to hold the auto dealer responsible, but then...
Employee.
It's harder to enforce, because we won't be able to hold the auto dealer responsible.
Well, hang on, Kelly.
That's what I...
So, the way that the enforcement would work and who we would hold responsible is, you know, if we... This is a land use enforcement. So, it comes from a complaint basis. So, if, say, the school calls and says, "Look, the auto dealers have a lot of employees parked on the street. We have an issue because of a parent called us," or whatever, then we would be able to go to the auto dealers and say, "Look, we have this condition. You guys need to make sure that you're abiding by your condition and work toward compliance." And there's a whole process through co-compliance and going down that direction for complying with a land use condition.
Go ahead, Kelly. Thank you.
And this is all based... This is all to prevent theoretical future problems that we don't even know about. For instance, not that I'm saying they would do this, but if the car dealerships decide to give away their employee parking for customer parking, or the people coming to buy their sandwiches in these cafe parking, and suddenly start encouraging their employees to park in the street, then you'd have no way to enforce it without the language being written the way it is.
Well, other than if folks are using the street, then they're limited to the two hours, so...
Right, but just in theory, if the customer... If the employee parking starts to go away because of other uses, then we would have to hold the employer, the landowner, responsible. Just theoretically.
And I agree with Commissioner O'Neill. I think this is all theoretical, and this is likely not going to happen. And I think we're spending a lot of time on something that is probably not going to happen. I don't think it's a good use of our time as a commission to sit here and pick apart. I think, like I said, my decision was that the applicant's request language is fine, based on this theoretical problem that may not arise.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah, I think the applicant's request is reasonable. And it comes from a couple of reasons. I think that... I just think it'd be bad business to sit there and allow this thing to fester so much for all the families that are going to the school side. I just don't see those guys pissing off all these customers, potential customers. So, I just don't think that it's necessarily going to happen. And then, you link that with the two-hour thing. I, you know, if the city is really irritated about something that's going on in that two-hour parking thing, area, then the city can patrol it and start issuing tickets right and left. And then, you have the focus of who's causing the issues, being the employee or whoever it is that's parking there. And they'll learn, and they'll migrate back over to whoever it is that's hiring them. So, I think in this particular case, it's probably a case of a real or imagined issue, and spinning ourselves around. And like Commissioner Hernandez said, it's probably not for the best for us to continue working it. I think the applicant's request is reasonable.
Comments? Let's move on.
No, no. No, no.
Thank you. Neda?
Thank you, Chairman Sefer. Sorry, I'm losing my voice as the progress is-
Can we just get a... I mean, a general consensus? Because I think, Phil... I mean, have we decided to go with the applicant's request?
I'm fine with the applicant's request.
Okay, all right.
With that, based on the discussions the Planning Commission has been having this evening, we've been taking notes on the conditions the commission requests to modify. So, we've put together a series of slides, broken down by PD permit, that designate those desired conditions, revisions. The first one is for... And each would require a separate action and motion by the Planning Commission. So, the first Plan Development Permit is PD 2018-0006. That's for the Santa Maria Auto Center North Campus. The revised conditions would be the one that staff would like to remove, which is Condition 7 regarding the CCNRs. The second is a condition to... A revision to Condition Number 5 regarding the employee parking to be revised as follows with what UPC's revised language is, striking out the first sentence and replacing it with the language as proposed. The second one is PD 2018-007, which is the South Campus, and similar condition revisions for that. If Planning Commission would prefer to act on those, and then we can move through the series, or however you would like to do that.
I like that.
I move that we approve Plan Development Permit PD 2018-006 with Condition 7 removed, and with revisions to Condition 5, including the applicant's language for parking, as opposed to the original language.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
I move that we accept... That we approve Plan Development Permit 2018-007 with Condition 7 removed, and revisions to Condition 5 to include the applicant's parking language, as opposed to the language originally written.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Keep the slides coming.
No problem. The next is PD 2018-004 for Home Motors. This with the Condition 3 revised to remove the additional palms at a spacing of one every 40 feet along Bradley Road to that condition. That was a tree planting condition. And then, with revisions to Condition Number 8, that also modified the employee parking. The second PD permit is PD 2017-0012 for Toyota, with the same modifications to that. With the one exception that the employee parking condition is Condition Number 9 for that permit.
Can I hear a motion?
I move that we approve Plan Development Permit PD 2018-004 with Condition 3 being revised to remove language requiring palm spacing at every 40 feet, and revising Condition 8 to include the applicant's employee parking language.
What's going on?
What's that?
You got a problem?
Okay, I'm sorry. Pat would like to note one word smithing. On these changes, and we very, very, very much appreciate it, the question came in is the land... The one word that needs to be added is, "The landowner shall provide the required amount of onsite parking to accommodate." Again, it's this issue of required parking onsite versus the amount of required parking. So, we were adding the word "in the required amount of onsite parking" in these provisions, because that marries to the condition above.
Yeah, because we have specific sites. We have specific places that you have to provide, and you want to refer to those.
Yeah.
Does staff have an issue with that? And can we modify the ones that we've already approved?
Yes. I make a motion that we modify the ones that we've already approved to reflect the change.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm looking at our city attorney.
I have a question, and then they didn't answer, so I was waiting for them.
We'll go back, and we'll update these.
I saw a lot of heads nodding up and down. We assumed that was a yes.
I didn't see that. I just wanted to hear that that was agreeable.
Yes, yes.
I think we should just go ahead, and I don't want to be overly formal. But the motion should be to reconsider the previous approvals, to modify the language, to make essentially the correction. Was that... Is that fair to say that that was your motion?
Yes.
That's exactly what Commissioner Hernandez said. Sure.
And Commissioner Lopez seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Whatever that motion was, passed. I'm thoroughly confused at this point.
Okay.
What are we looking at, Neda?
Um, let me take you back. We are on making motions for Home Motors and Toyota, and I have added amount to that, Condition 9 and Condition 8.
Are we good?
So, Maya Ridge, so I'll start over.
Hang on. We're going to be technical. Matching the word "of" is in there.
Amount of, yes, right.
We're almost there.
So is you.
See, aren't you glad to have it done?
I'm sorry. Okay. There you go.
Aww. Amount of onsite. I move that we approve Plan Development Permit PD 2018-004 with Condition 3 revised to remove language requiring palm spacing every 40 feet, and revise Condition 8 to include the applicant's language about employee parking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we approve plan development permit PD 2017-0012 with condition three revised to remove language requiring palm spacing every 40 feet and revising condition nine to include the applicant's employee parking language.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. I'm sorry, I'm a little tired. That motion carried, and I did a, I did a aye. No, I'm not. That's a yes on that one. Sorry.
Okay, moving on to the next series of PD permits, PD 2017-0020 for Lot 5 Auto, again with modification to the tree planting condition and the employee parking condition, and then PD 2017-0014 for Honda with modifications to the tree planting condition and the employee parking condition, and then the additional condition with revisions to condition five in regards to the west elevation artwork. Staff is recommending a slightly alternate wording for that condition modification to still read, "The artwork shall not have any specific brand logo or signage incorporated into the design except for a sponsor and artist recognition identifier in the lower corners."
Can you remove the "and"?
Yeah, if we're going to do it right.
I think it's lots five and six. Is that correct?
It's Honda and then Lot 11.
We're just looking at the agenda here.
Twenty and fourteen.
And PD permit twenty...
The title of it is called Lot 5 Auto.
Okay, it's not Lot 5 and 6 Auto. So the agenda's incorrect.
Yes.
That's what the, David's pointing out, that the plan development permit also says lots five and six auto, so...
It's on both lots. The title, it's an insignificant detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Got it figured out?
Yeah, it is getting late, isn't it? Trusting her that it's not important.
Okay. I have removed "and."
Thank you.
I move that we approve plan development permit PD 2017-0020 with condition three revised to remove language requiring palm spacing every 40 feet and revisions to condition six to include the applicant's employee parking language.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Anybody?
No, you're going to have to do it.
Go back, we gotta go back, we gotta open back one. I move that we approve plan development permit PD 2017-0014 with condition three revised to remove language requiring palm spacing every 40 feet, revising condition seven to include the applicant's language for employee parking, and revising condition five regarding artwork not including brand logos or signage except to identify the sponsor and the artist in the lower corners.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carried.
And then last but not least, PD 2017-0021 for Lot 11 Auto, and these conditions are revising condition number three for the tree planting, condition number seven, which was a revision to the type of fencing from wrought iron to decorative tubular steel, and then revisions to the employee parking on condition nine, and then condition five in regards to the west elevation artwork.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, I'd like to move that PD 2017-0021 be continued to the next study session.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carried. So we're moving that along to the next study session. Correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Did it right?
Yes.
I didn't hear Aragel's vote. Okay.
We just want clarification with, oh, I'm sorry.
No good.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Dickerson voted to approve that?
Continue.
Well, to approve the motion. The motion was to continue Lot 11.
To the next study session.
To the next study session. And...
Right.
Which is the June 7th study session meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't hear.
It was a 3-2 vote.
June 7th?
Correct.
Okay.
What else you got?
I could do this all night.
We're ready now.
That concludes the Auto Center Plan Development Permit series.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations, and looking forward to seeing a beautiful Auto Center from the freeway.
In every half second.
I think it's important that... They need to get out.
Hey, you guys, could you move it outside? Thank you. We got a few things we've got left to do before we can leave. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, if I can find my agenda. Other business. Do we have any oral reports from planning commissioners and staff?
Yes, Ryan does, but Tom, Commissioner...
If you could turn it on. You did a really great presentation, the history of it bringing us forward to this. Thank you. That was very, very well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
That was very nice.
Well, and thank you too for thinking ahead about, about agendizing the motion so that it was, I mean, you really thought that through and thought ahead, and I appreciate that. Yeah.
I tried. I live to make you look good.
Making yourself look good in the process.
Do we have anything else? So I'm going to be a can of worms here. Yeah, I gotta, I gotta do it. So McCoy Lane, you know, we have the Moxie Cafe, which was approved long before I was a planning commissioner, and there's a, the long section of McCoy that says "No Parking", and everyone parks there. And I don't know what our agreement with is with the owner, but he's building a huge addition to his building on the other side of the street. The traffic's going to increase. It's already dangerous. The 35 mile an hour sign is well beyond this curve where it says "No Parking." It does have a little 25 mile an hour zone. I think we either need to get rid of the "No Parking" because people are violating it all the time, or we need to figure out something else. That's my say. Any other commissioners? Anything else?
I agree with you entirely. I mean, my, my business is right off of McCoy, and, right on McCoy, and I see that all the time. I mean, and people come roaring through there.
They do.
I mean, it's, I mean, so we either have to enforce it or throw up our hands and say, "Yeah, good enough," and, you know, everybody is...
I mean, we might even want to put in a crosswalk, I'm telling you. I mean, something, and, or maybe, because it's really going to be an issue, and it's only time until someone gets hurt there. Because all of their employees walk across the street to the cafe, people are zooming through there, and it's, it's not marked really well, and the "No Parking" is just, no one abides by it. So if we could just look at that and try to get the, get something reasonable for the owner, he can get his patrons in and out safely, and also have traffic on the, on the street flow correctly. I don't know what the answer is, so, yeah, I'm looking to you guys to try to figure something out that works for everyone.
Commissioner Seifert, Chairman, I will coordinate with the police department regarding your concern regarding speeding on McCoy Lane.
It's not really just the speeding, David. It's the fact that we haven't posted "No Parking," and there's always cars there, and, and, and it's just, it's just a combination of, we're not enforcing the signs, and people are speeding. It's, it's a whole bunch of stuff, and it's just going to be a really unsafe environment for the patrons crossing that street with that, with that blind corner right there. Then the speeding does come into an issue because you got to run. So if we could figure out something, it probably, it's probably about time.
We don't want it to be an exercise in natural selection.
Well, and not to mention, as we are growing as a community, if people are scoffing at parking signs, we're just setting ourselves up for failure on Shepherd Drive and everything else if, if people don't think parking is a, something they have to think about in Santa Maria. We got to start being more firm on that. I didn't realize the signs actually say "No Parking," and people park there.
Oh, it's absolutely "No Parking." Yeah, "No Stopping Anytime, No Parking." And there's a little 25 mile an hour sign, but it's very little. And then there's a big 35 mile an hour past it, and by that time, I mean, people are already on the accelerator, getting, getting down to A Street. So it's just, it's just an interesting situation that's occurred there because of the restaurant, and, and we just need to do something to help the patrons and the owner just kind of navigate that, that traffic issue, if we could.
Yeah. I had mentioned I will coordinate with the police department regarding the enforcement of the "No Parking."
Excuse me?
And speeding.
Yeah, yeah, Jay's a great guy and a huge contributor to our community. I don't want to create an issue for him. What I really want to do is find a solution. I'm not, I'm not trying to create a problem for him. What I'm really trying to do is get his, get it safe for everybody. There's got to be a solution, whether it's signage, crosswalks, maybe protected crosswalks with the little lighty flashy things. There's got to be some way that we can, because we, because it's been approved, and, and he's in there, and he's got a restaurant, and I had nothing to do with that, so I don't even know what his conditions are, but it would be nice if we helped him out and kept his patrons alive.
And I would rather, I would rather see go more down the direction of you guys taking a look as to whether or not those "No Parking," that "No Parking" area is needed. I mean, I would hate for an unintended consequence to be that we, we start ticking the hell out of people who are parking there, and then Jay all of a sudden loses business, and he's got to close up shop. I mean, I, I don't want to strangle the current businesses there.
Exactly. I'm trying to bring up an issue, but I'm not, I'm not trying to make it an enforcement or a penalty. I'm trying to just bring something to light for the city and a, and a business that, that does seem to be coming as more and more of an issue. I'm not asking you to go out there and ticket everybody or anything, but some, the traffic, I know we have traffic officers that work on this, and if they could look at it and try to get a, a good comprehensive solution, that would be great for everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I totally agree, and thank you for adding that.
Well, just, just that, why, for the commission's information is that the "No Stopping Zones" were established for site distance, to improve the site distance, because there is a curve there, and it's posted 35 miles an hour, there was a speed survey.
It's actually posted 25. It's 35 down, down the street. That's a 25 right there.
And that will clarify, as I look for the speed survey. So all the, all the roadways where they have a legitimate speed survey is, they've been surveyed, and so we'll take a look at that. Also coordinate...
Maybe bring it down to 20, and with a big sign or something.
There's certain guidelines that had, that had to adhere to. So, like I said, I will coordinate with the police department and look at our current speed surveys, and then reach out to the property owner, because they have not reached out to the city to, regarding this. This is the first that I've heard of it from, and this is coming from the planning commission.
I really don't want to upset him, which it probably will. He's, that's not my goal. Just saying. I'm, I'm really trying to find a solution. Yes, that is true.
Well, I will look into it.
Thank you. That's it for me. Anything else?